Testing. Microphone check.
You were the best. All right, and we've got, so basically, let's give everything, all of this to Kelly. Oh, sorry, before I leave. This is easy. I know.
You have two girls.
Three girls.
You have so much trouble.
Three girls. Thank you. Karyana, how are you?
Good.
What did you do?
Make sure her heart fills.
Today's the 13th.
I'm good, thank you.
We can take Kelly's tea, she's out here.
Hey, we just want to say another thanks to you for hosting.
We have like a bunch of...
They're so funny too.
Do I give this to you?
No, you can just put it there.
I'm already on the list, but that's you I give?
You're already speaking, then you don't need a public comment.
I've never done this before. Okay, thank you so much.
How are you?
I have two, three, four.
Are you, sir? It's told that, never know, I'm from Michigan. Let me get on my kit. Get on my kit. Oh, my goodness, more papers than I had looked at last night.
Karyana. Karyana, could you give these to Alessandra?
Morning, Senator.
For Alessandra.
Good morning. We will officially call the Palm Beach Legislative Delegation meeting to order. A special treat for us this morning, before we get started, to sing our national anthem. I'd like to please have Ms. Lisa Keegan, a sixth grader from Rosarian Academy, and a member of the Young Speakers of the Palm Beaches, please come forward. Lisa is a proud member of the Young Singers of the Palm Beaches, where she has been a member for the past four years. Lisa has performed multiple times as a soloist and a choir member on the main stage at the Kravis Center. In 2023, she was elected as the youngest member of the ACDA National Honor Choir. She's also performed with the Palm Beach Symphony and the Pop Orchestra of the Palm Beaches. She attends Rosarian Academy, where she is in the sixth grade. Lisa is proud to represent the Young Singers of the Palm Beaches. It hopes you will join them for the Holiday Concert at the Kravis Center on Sunday, December 14th, at 2025. At this time, I'd like to ask all members of the public and members onstage to please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Fantastic. And if you could, please remain standing. And at this time, Representative Weinberger will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give another round of applause for Lisa Keegan. That was fantastic. Also, a special thank you to the L Center for Excellence for hosting our North County meeting today. We will hear momentarily from their Executive Director, Marlene Sotello. But first, from the town of Jupiter... Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to kick things off with our county mayor has a video, Mayor Maria Marino.
Good morning. I am Palm Beach County Mayor Maria Marino, and I would like to welcome all of you to the public hearing regarding local bills for the 2026 Florida Legislative Session. I am sorry that members of our board are unable to join, but we have a BCC zoning meeting this morning. We look forward to a successful legislative session to benefit our community. Have a great day.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Marino. Good luck at that zoning meeting. All right, up next, our town host here in the town of Jupiter, Councilwoman Malise Sandstrom. Councilwoman, thanks for being here and for hosting today. You're recognized.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us for this bill hearing today. My name is Malise Sandstrom. I'm a councilmember with the town of Jupiter, and on behalf of our mayor and our vice mayor and our council, we do welcome you. And I just want to remind everyone, you know, this event is sandwiched between two distinctly American holidays. We just celebrated Veterans Day, as I'm sure many of you had. And I think that really puts into perspective the fact that we're very honored and privileged to be here, to get to do this today. And I just want to make sure we always remember that. The second holiday is Thanksgiving, two weeks from today. I'm grateful for all of you, for the conversations we've had. We may have some lively discussion today, but if anything, it's good practice for Thanksgiving dinner two weeks from now. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. All right, our true host here in the building and here on the wonderful campus for the L Center for Excellence, that was perfect key on this movie to kick us off. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Marlene Sotello, Executive Director at L for Autism. Today, I want to talk about something incredibly important, something that keeps many parents of children with autism awake at night: drowning. It's heartbreaking to say, but drowning is the number-one cause of death for individuals with autism, and Florida leads the nation in child drownings. The Autism Society of Florida reports that 76% of children who drown are under the age of three. Why is this happening? Many autistic children are naturally drawn to water. They may wander away from a safe environment, unaware of the dangers water can pose. For families, the fear of losing a child this way is very real. To prevent these tragedies, we're taking action. We're building a specialized autism-friendly aquatics center as part of our new recreation complex. This facility will include a swimming pool and splash pad, both designed with safety, inclusion, and water education in mind. But this is more than just a pool. It could be a lifeline.
Hi, I'm Mary Carmen Saleta. For over 20 years, I've dedicated my life to teaching water safety and swimming instruction to individuals with different abilities, including autism. This isn't just a job, it's a passion and a calling. We know that early intervention is key. Teaching water safety as soon as possible before a child is drawn to water can save lives. At L for Autism, we are taking a proactive approach. That's why we created the Ernie L's Game on Autism Aquatics Program, a program dedicated to teaching water safety in a way that makes sense for individuals on the autism spectrum. When the aquatics center is complete, it will allow us to deliver life-saving water safety education and drowning prevention strategies to families and organizations around the world. No child should be at risk simply because they are attracted to water.
Thank you so much for that timely reminder and wonderful video, Marlene. Thank you for being here and again for hosting. Our, the Executive Director for L for Autism, Marlene Sartelo, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. Good morning. We are so happy to have you all here again for the third year. This is your home. Our home is your home, as we say in Spanish, mi casa, tu casa. And we're very excited to have you here. As stated in the video, drowning is the number-one cause of death for young children with autism. And L for Autism, along with our partners, are addressing this head-on. And one of the things that is very important to us is to have collaborative partnerships. And therefore, we are not doing this in a silo. We have partnered and worked together with the Autism Society of America, Cast Water Safety, with the Dan Marino Foundation, Big Fish, Little Fish, and the Children's Service Council of Palm Beach County, all to gather information together of what is the need and how can we make a difference together. Because together is how we will save lives. And it is because of all of you here at the Legislative Delegation that has allowed us, L for Autism, to be able to save lives through our specialized recreation complex and through the creation of our Ernie L's Game on Autism Aquatics curriculum. I'd like to specifically thank Senator Gail Harrell and Representative John Snyder. You have been an unwavering support to L for Autism, not only through your support for our appropriations, but you are a voice out there, making sure that people with autism are heard and they're included. And that is really life-changing, because you have a presence in this state, and your voice carries so much weight, and we are forever grateful. And Representative Meg Weinberger, dear friend of L for Autism for so many years, you have made such an impact on the adults in our program, and we are forever grateful for you and for the entire Legislative Delegation for your belief in the abilities of people with autism. We encourage everyone here today to also support people with autism. You can do it today. One, by sharing what autism is, by ensuring that individuals with autism are included, and by celebrating their abilities. Today, we have the sea of possibilities out in the foyer. They're selling products that were handmade by adults with autism in our program. It's a beautiful thing to be able to see those adults with all the care in the world. They're sitting there making these products, and then they're going out to the green markets and they're selling them with joy, knowing that they have created something to be able to share with the world. So join me in celebrating people with autism. And once again, thank you so much to all of you in the Legislative Delegation for your continued support.
Thank you so much, Marlene. At this time, just a quick reminder that those who wish to speak on any of the local bills being heard today or would like to speak during public comment, there are two different forms that you would need to fill out. So one for specifically to the local bill hearings and then one for public comment. And you can see Karyana Ingram, our wonderful delegation aide, who can help you out with that. At this time, I would like our Executive Director, Vicky Nolan, to please call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Here.
Senator Bernard.
Here.
Senator Harrell.
Here.
Senator Polsky. Representative Edmonds.
Present.
Representative Gerwig. Representative Gossett Sideman.
Here.
Representative Skidmore. Representative Snyder.
Here.
Representative Tendrich.
Here.
Representative Weinberger.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vicky. We'll quickly give an opportunity for members to introduce themselves and staff. For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Snyder. I've had the honor of representing House District 86 in 2020. That comprises all of coastal Martin County and the northern portion of Palm Beach. My legislative aide, Sarah Craven, is here. And if you need anything, our office stands ready to serve you. We have a location here in Jupiter and Palm City as well. Let's kick it off down at the end. Representative Berman, you're, or Senator Berman, you're recognized. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Senator Lori Berman. I represent the southern part of the county, Delray, Boca, and Boynton Beach. And then the district moves over to the western part and then goes up to take in Wellington and Belgrade and South Bay. I have, I believe, three staff members here. I see Brenda Bryant. I see Troy Grass, and there's Sophia Kabej. She's probably stuck in the traffic that I was stuck in on the way here. So happy to hear from everyone and see you all this morning. Thank you.
Senator Harrell, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'm Senator Gail Harrell. Delighted to be here, and I represent District 31, which incorporates the southern side of St. Lucie County, all of Martin County, and the northern and western section of Palm Beach County. I kind of stair-step down. I come down on the east coast, down to PGA Boulevard, go west to Military Trail, then go south to North Lake. At North Lake, I go west out to the Turnpike and go all the way down to Southern, and then way out west to the lake, incorporating 16 cities altogether in my district. But thank you all for being here. It's delightful. If you have policy issues, my policy aide is Karen Sweeney, Karen over here. And if you are looking for money, Carrie Lyra handles all our budget requests. And then all kinds of constituent issues are handled by Ann Bolduc in our office. We do have an office in Stewart, and we also have an office in the Town Hall of Jupiter. And we're delighted to be here.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Weinberger, you're recognized.
Good morning. Meg Weinberger, I represent House District 94. It's from Southern Boulevard to Indian Town, west of the Turnpike to the Glades, Pahokee, and South Bay. And I'm glad to be here. Oh, I recognize my aide Kat is here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Senator Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Mac Bernard, State Senator for District 24. And my district starts in the town of North Palm Beach, and I cover most of central Palm Beach County and goes down to almost the Boynton Beach line. It is great to be here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Gossett Sideman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, I'm Peggy Gossett Sideman. I represent District 91, which is all of the city of Boca Raton, all of the town of Highland Beach, and the county west to 441. I'm very proud to work with my municipalities. Boca's celebrating right now its 100th anniversary, and Highland Beach is celebrating its 75th anniversary. We have a terrific section in southeast county, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Representative Edmonds, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. My name is Gervonta Edmonds, and I am proud to serve District 88. It covers Lake Park, Riviera Beach, West Palm Beach, Mangonia Park, and Royal Palm Beach. Here with me is my legislative aide, Rayma Justwave, and my district aide, Latonya Cruz. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Representative Tendrich, you're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Tendrich. I represent House District 89, which is central Palm Beach County, from Hypoluxo to Southern Boulevard, and then from Dixie Highway to just west of Military. I am here with my legislative aide, Joey Eboleat, in the back. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you. Just a couple of announcements, just a little bit of roadmapping for today. We're going to start the meeting here in a little bit with hearing from local bills. And we will move through that and then go into public testimony. I do have a 9:50 hard stop for myself personally. I've got a mandatory hearing that I need to attend, but I know that the business will continue on just fine. We are waiting for our vice chair, Skidmore. I know she's also stuck in traffic. So when we get into local bills, I've got a couple up and will, if needed, be handing the gavel over to our former chair, Senator Harrell. Just as a quick reminder, we do have a workshop between the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation and the Board of County Commissioners and Palm Beach County League of Cities. It'll take place on Monday, December 15th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Palm Beach State College Locksahatchee Groves Campus. For those that didn't get enough of today's meeting, it is being livestreamed and recorded on the Legislative Delegation Facebook page and the Florida Channel, where replays will be shown on Palm Beach County TV, which is available on Comcast Channel 20, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and streamed 24/7 on the county's website. Before we get started, we'd like to hear from our constitutional officers that are here with us today. Out of just the time in front of us, I would ask that you please keep your comments to around three minutes if possible. But up first, Wendy Satori Link, our Supervisor of Elections for Palm Beach County. Welcome, Madam Supervisor. Thank you for being here. You're recognized.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you for a moment, Mr. Chair, and honorable representatives and senators here today. We're busy in our office. We've got five elections coming up in the next three months. So between House District 90, 87, municipal elections, runoff elections. So we've got quite a bit coming up. I have provided earlier, that I'm sure everybody has in front of you, the priorities for the Florida Supervisors of Elections. I have the privilege of not only serving as the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections, but currently am also the chair, or actually, we call the president, of Florida Supervisors of Elections as well. So in front of you, we have the priorities that we listed. I thought I would just highlight a couple of them and then two additional requests for Palm Beach County. One of them, the first is, you may have heard that as the driver's license numbers are changing, it used to be we would automatically get updates. But the way the bill or the law was written, the DHSMV is not able to automatically send us the new driver's license number unless the voter specifically requests it. And most of the time, the people at DHSMV will say, "Do you want to update your voter registration?" Voter thinks, "No, I didn't make any changes," so they say, "No." Well, that means we don't get their new driver's license number. And doesn't stop them from voting. But what it does do is when they go online, if they want to make a request perhaps for a vote by mail, or when they sign a petition and they give that driver's license number or they're calling to request something, it's not going to match what we have on file. And so then we have to go through a longer process to get that updated. So we're just requesting that it be amended so that we can automatically get that information from DMV. The second is, our election workers are harder and harder to get. And part of the problem with that is, we get a lot of requests for their personal information. And federally, it's been exempted because of critical infrastructure, but not every state has done it, and Florida has not yet done it as a state. So a lot of people have told us they will no longer be a poll worker because we do get requests for people for all of their personal information. And people will follow them home, go to their homes, and they get harassing letters. And they just would prefer not to do that. So we are asking that that be codified in Florida as well. Secondly is, or third is, we had in the past had just an administrative checkbox, we called it, on our vote-by-mail envelopes. That was removed because of the law that passed a couple of years ago that says, which was a good one, that to identify and confirm that you are the person... Sorry. Do you want me to finish that thought or stop?
Yeah, please, if you could.
Okay, okay. That if you are the person who, you know, that you're the one requesting. So we require either the last four digits of your social security number or your Florida driver's license number in order to verify that that is you. Well, now, because we've gone through a couple of cycles of that, everybody who is on the vote-by-mail request roll has given us that information. So the request is that we be allowed to put a checkbox so that if they want to continue the vote by mail, they can check that box in order to do that. So we did use to have it, but we had to take it away because we needed to verify that everybody on there had already provided that information. Now we've done so. So, and on the other, you'll see there are two other requests specific to Palm Beach County that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Supervisor. Appreciate you being here with us this morning. Up next, our property appraiser for Palm Beach County, Ms. Dorothy Jacks. Thank you so much for being here, ma'am. You are recognized.
Thank you so much for having me, and I will keep my comments brief. It's always a pleasure to speak with you. Of course, I don't think I need to mention how hot my topic is for 2026, being one half of the property tax calculation. The valuation and the exemption portion of it is at the front of all of our minds at the moment. I will comment that I've had conversations with you, Senator Bernard, and I spoke about your ideas. And I'm very happy to continue having those conversations as the year goes on. Certainly, we have a lot of data in our office and can make some financial assumptions about some of the proposed legislation. And we are preparing a dashboard for our cities and the county and the special districts so that they can see also what that financial impact will be. We think that that's really the important part that my office can play in this conversation is to share information as it comes about what the bill's various impacts would be on Palm Beach County. In addition, we are running again at the property appraisers a bill related to disclosure of true taxation on Realtor websites. So places such as Zillow and Realtor.com. We'd like to be able to display what taxes would be if somebody buys that home as opposed to the information they're getting at the moment, which is what the current taxes are, often very deflated by the prior owner's caps. And so we really would appreciate your support on that concept. It's not too difficult a lift. We have talked extensively to the Realtors about it to make sure it was something that they can get behind. And we hope that this year, year number three, will be our lucky year for getting that through. It's just good public policy. It will really help prospective buyers get a true sense of what their budget is going to have to look like if they are able to purchase that home. I will be in Tallahassee in February with my association. I will come and hope to be able to come and see many of you there. Probably by then, a lot of what is happening will have evolved a little bit more, and we can talk in more detail about impacts. But as always, I'm here for you. Just a phone call away. Feel free to reach out anytime. My staff are ready to help with any questions you have for us. Thank you so much for the time this morning.
Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Jackson. We look forward to continuing the conversation. Appreciate all your hard work. Our public defender here for the 15th Judicial Circuit, Mr. Daniel Isinger. Good morning, sir. Thanks for being here. You are recognized.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and thanks for having me this morning. I'm used to judges throwing things at me when I talk too long, so feel free. I just wanted to update you a little bit on what we're doing at the public defender's office, both in and outside the courtroom. I've been an assistant public defender for over 20 years and now the elected for about a year, and I can just tell you that we truly are at a tipping point when it comes to how many mentally ill folks we have in our courts and our jails. I can tell you that for the first time, I think genuinely, there is a consensus among those of us that work in the criminal justice system, including law enforcement, that we do start to need to treat people who are chronically mentally ill differently than we have. I can tell you, for example, the healthcare district, as you know, is starting a treatment center, a crisis center, where police will be able to divert people who are mentally ill, instead of going to jail, into their treatment center. They're building that now. My office just entered into a memorandum of understanding with the West Palm Beach Police Department to where they're going to call our social workers now before they make an arrest if they approach someone who clearly is mentally ill on a low-level offense. And if the person opts into treatment, if we can provide services, that gives the officer an option not to arrest. So I think that's a huge undertaking and I really, really appreciate the West Palm Beach Police Department for doing that. About two years ago, we started the first mental health treatment court in Palm Beach County for misdemeanors. We link our clients to services and the state attorney's office, so long as the client is abiding by those terms, they dismiss those charges. So that's huge. And then just yesterday, we had a meeting with the county about expanding that under the Tristan Murphy Act, which I'm sure you all are familiar with from Tallahassee. That became law last year, where again, the real point of it is to divert folks who clearly are mentally ill, low-risk, low offenses, into treatment out of the jail. It's not just a moral question for us. I think it's just also an economic question. You know, it costs a lot more money to house someone in the jail than it does to treat them. So we're all in on those things. The judge we met with from Miami yesterday, who had, she runs a problem-solving court, as she calls it, in Miami. I thought she put it best when she said it wasn't just a matter of morals, money, but it's also a matter of public safety. Healthy people don't commit crimes. People that are doing well are less likely to be risky and so that's why we do what we do. I can tell you from our office, we now have 10 full-time social workers. That's up from two or three 10 years ago. So the need is there and we're trying to do our part. But I'll just sort of ask you all, as you return to Tallahassee, to remind your colleagues, your friends on both sides of the aisle, that public defenders truly are not only important for full and equal representation in court, but also we are a big part of the equation for public safety and we will continue to do our part. As all of you know, if you ever have any questions or issues or you want to talk through anything, please feel free to reach out to me anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here, sir. We appreciate you. And again, if you need anything as session progresses, please don't hesitate to reach out. All right, this morning, we have eight local bills before us. Each member and their staff have received the documents in advance for review. These proposed local bills will be presented, discussed, and seven of them will be taken up for a vote and we'll get into number eight here shortly. Following the full presentation from each local bill presenter, we will allow for public comment from those in the audience who wish to speak. But I do stress, when we use the words "allow," I think we're going to change that to say we need public comment. And so if you don't feel that you're able to get all of your thoughts in today, please know that our doors are open. Reach out to our staff, that's why we're here. And many of these bills are likely to change as the process moves forward and a big part of that is due to the public comment. So again, for time purposes, we are going to keep each comment period to three minutes so that way everybody gets an opportunity to speak and every bill has a chance to be heard and that we have ample time to get into public testimony. One thing I do want to share, when I first showed up to Tallahassee, fresh out of the campaign trail, I thought, you know, my idea of politics was what we see on TV happening up in Washington, D.C., you know, battling each other, sharp disagreements, and yes, debate does happen. Yes, sharp disagreements do happen. But one thing that is different in Tallahassee than I believe in Washington, D.C. is that when the cameras stop, when the debate ends, we're able to come together as friends and as colleagues and certainly, within this delegation, a strong belief that together we can accomplish some amazing things for Palm Beach County. Someone that early on in my delegation history really took her under, took me under her wing and helped show me just some of the ropes in Tallahassee, some of the stories here in Palm Beach County and someone who has been really a tireless public servant for this region is our vice chair and a true friend, Ms. Kelly Skidmore. So before I turn the gavel over to you, vice chair, I just want to say thank you for your friendship, for your mentorship, and, you know, they need to redo the quote, "If good things come in small packages," I would say fierce fighters and very strong advocates also come sometimes in small packages. So Kelly, thank you for everything you do and the gavel for the rest of the meeting is in your trusty hands.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone.
Did you want to start with the second one?
Yes.
Okay. We are going to start with the Village of Duquesta. Mayor Molly Young, you are recognized to present the bill. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the delegation. My name is Mayor Molly Young and with unanimous support of the Village of Duquesta Council some, who are here with me today, we are here to ask your support of a local bill named Duquesta Park Bill. Sponsored by Representative Snyder and carried by Senator Harrell, this bill authorizes transfer of approximately 41 acres of state-owned land known as Duquesta Regional Park from the state to Duquesta through the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund. The property has been leased from Duquesta by Duquesta since the 1970s and is established community park that serves about 175,000 residents within a 10-mile radius. While it sits along the southern border of Martin County, it serves a vast amount of families across northern Palm Beach County as well, which is why your support is so important. The park is really a true gem. It offers a variety of youth and adult sports. It has popular pickleball and tennis courts, a dog park, Girl Scout facilities, nature trails, and open green space that residents of all ages enjoy year-round. I can personally attest that three generations of my own family have made lasting memories at this park. The village does not pay a lease fee on the park, but we do fully fund and perform all maintenance and improvements. Since 2005, Duquesta has invested more than 2.1 million into the park, averaging roughly $250,000 to $3,000 a year in upkeep and enhancements. We're very committed to the park's continued success, not only as a recreational space, but a hub for community connection, health, environmental stewardship, and as an economic driver that supports our beloved local businesses. The local bill before you does not request any state funds. It simply conveys ownership of the state-owned property to Duquesta in perpetuity for public park and green space use. It can never be sold for any other purpose and if it were ever to cease serving as a public park, it would revert back to the state. Thanks to a generous state appropriation we received in 2024, we are now in the design phase of much-needed park improvements that were put together by robust public input. The enhancements will attract even more visitors from across the region, promoting healthy lifestyles and fostering social connections. By preserving the park's natural areas, we will advance the state's shared goals of conservation, recreation, and resource-based public use. Conveying this land to Duquesta will strengthen our local accountability, will reduce the state's administrative burden, and will allow us to make these much-needed long-term investments to continue, to ensure that the park continues to strongly serve the entire region. We have received full support from the Martin County Legislative Delegation and on behalf of the Village of Duquesta Council and our residents, I respectfully ask for your support in advancing this local bill through the 2026 legislative session. Thank you, as always, for your partnership and allowing us the time to speak to you today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Young. Members, are there any questions of the presenter? Seeing no questions, is there any public comment on the bill? No public comment on the bill. Representative Snyder, would you like to make a motion to approve the local bill?
I would just ask for your favorable support, members. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show the bill passed.
Thank you very much, delegation. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, members. We're moving on now to, there we go, Municipal Service Taxing Unit and Chief Patrick Kennedy. You are recognized to explain the bill, the local bill.
Chief. Did you recognize me just to make an opening, please?
Yes. Representative, Chair Snyder, you're recognized.
Chief Coyle. Chief Coyle is here.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And members, part of, just to again set a little bit of kind of roadmapping for this particular bill and what I believe is a very important and timely conversation, the way really all bills work and especially local bills have a process that they must go through in order for an idea to become a law. So what happens as representatives here in the local delegation, any member of the community, any stakeholder, any advocate can bring an idea forward to a member and ask them to sponsor the local bill. Once we take that language, many times it can be in what appears to be draft form of a proposed bill. We take that and there is dedicated staff at the House of Representatives that help us take an idea and we submit that into legislative bill drafting and many times, the bill will come out looking similar. Sometimes it will come out looking differently because there are experts that are looking and saying, maybe this language needs to go in a different part of the statute. We can't do this. We needed to do this. And so many times what goes into drafting looks different coming out. The bill that we're about to talk about regarding the MSTU's annexation and fire safety, I know has created quite a bit of conversation and we're already seeing some pretty strong statements made in regard to this idea. One thing I do want to stress is that we have already done three different draft changes while we've been working through getting this bill into drafting. We do not have anything out of the House Bill Drafting Section today, which is what we would actually be able to vote on. And so we're operating in good faith that we're going to take this concept and this idea, start the conversation, open it up to some public comment, but it's not fair to any member to make a vote on something that they have not seen. That's fundamental to what we do and I owe that to each and every one of you as the bill sponsor, to only ask you to vote on something that you can actually look at and see, and the members of the public deserve that as well, because to try and vote or have a conversation on something that, again, we don't even know what it'll actually look like, is not fair. Once a bill comes out of drafting, it has to go through a vote of the local delegation. Again, that's not happening today on this bill, but from there, once a vote, if it does happen and it passes successfully, then it goes through three different committees throughout the, in the House of Representatives. At every single point in time, that bill can be amended, that bill is debated, there is public comment, and all throughout that process, and again, this is for all bills, there's opportunity for the public to make their voices heard and to talk to each of your members about that. Then from there, a bill still has to go to the floor for all 120 members of the House and the Senate to vote on them and move to the governor's desk. So today is step one on this bill. We still, again, like I said, do not have an actual draft yet, but we know what we're trying to accomplish. So with that, kind of general groundwork and what's going to happen today, we're asking for Chief Coyle to present the topic. We will open it up for public comment and then at that point, we will temporarily postpone the bill for further reconsideration once we have something to actually vote on. With that, I close, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Snyder. Chief Coyle, you are recognized to present the bill.
Thank you, Chief Snyder, co-chair Skidmore, and the entire delegation committee. I want to talk briefly about the intent and purpose of this bill. To preserve uninterrupted, high-quality public service, specifically fire suppression and EMS services, for residents currently protected by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. This bill does not remove services from municipalities. It simply ensures that areas already served by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue continue to receive those same services. The goal is to provide constant, uninterrupted service, not create expansion. Residents should never experience delayed or reduced emergency response times because of annexation or jurisdictional boundaries. The current issue that we're up against, when municipalities annex high-value properties, they gain new tax revenue. Without this legislation, county taxpayers still fund nearby fire and EMS coverage. This bill ensures equitable reimbursement for services already provided by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, protecting all taxpayers for subsidizing annex areas. Currently, 16, 16 of our 51 fire stations are in the annex plan. No duplication of services. Once annexed, properties are removed from the MSTU. Residents pay only once and the annexing municipality reimburses the county. The result, one provider, one payer, no duplication, and remaining a stable environment for the residents. Infrastructure and planning. PVCFR invests heavily in station apparatus and personnel to maintain county-wide coverage. This bill allows strategic planning and avoids unnecessary municipal spending to build redundant facilities or purchase new apparatus, saving millions in taxpayer dollars. The current model for Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is essentially building capital replacement plans on quicksand. Local partnership. This legislation preserves existing service boundaries, promoting collaboration, regional efficiency, and shared responsibility, not competition. Municipalities remain free to annex. This simply maintains operation and physical balance under one service, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. So the takeaways are, preserves current service area under Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, guarantees continuous coordinated public safety coverage, prevents duplicated infrastructure costs, strengthens regional collaboration, and the continuity of these services ensures the health of the community and the firefighters who so proudly serve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Coyle. Members and senators, are there questions? Any questions? Okay, we're going to move into public testimony. Amelia Jadoo, Executive Director, Palm Beach County League of Cities, you're recognized.
Good morning, honorable members of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. My name is Amelia Jadoo and I am the Executive Director for the Palm Beach League of Cities, which is a nonpartisan organization that represents all 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County. In the next three minutes, I will highlight to you the municipality's collective concerns regarding the Municipal Service Taxing Unit local bill and urge this delegation to defer its consideration until the 2027 legislative session so that there's an opportunity for meaningful collaboration that may occur between the cities and the proponents of the local bill with a goal of creating a revised piece of local legislation that all stakeholders can support. The 18-member diverse board of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, which is comprised of large, small, northern, southern, western, eastern municipalities, unanimously oppose this local bill for one overriding reason. It bypasses the collective collaborative process that our county and municipalities have built. First, what is the rush? This bill materialized without advance notice to municipalities and zero collaboration on its contentious provisions. Meanwhile, the county's ongoing master transportation plan gives municipalities a seat at the table to address shared challenges. Public safety impacts every corner of Palm Beach County, yet municipalities were denied that same seat here as it relates to fire rescue services. Second, has the county's legal office analyzed and approved this bill? We're on draft three, we just heard. Multiple municipal attorneys have scrutinized this bill's language and Multiple municipal attorneys have scrutinized this bill's language and raised serious red flags about its legality from potential conflicts with state statutes to risks of unenforceable mandates. Without essential vetting, we are courting lawsuits, not solutions. Third, where's the data? And why hasn't the data been provided to the municipalities? Again, we're on draft three. Or included in the summary of the bill. What are the adverse impacts that the local bill is intended to avoid? And finally, I'm sure you're wondering, why am I asking so many questions? The answer is simple. Because the municipalities have received zero information, zero data, and zero meaningful opportunity to collaborate. The municipalities are not included in this process at all, and again, we're at draft three. There are far more questions than answers, and that is unacceptable for the legislation impacting and affecting every city in this county. Ramming this through now undermines trust, ignores local expertise, and risks flawed policy. Respectfully, I urge you to defer this bill, return to the collective table, and build a policy that unites us and not divides us here in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jadoo. Jim Kurtzewski? Kurtzewski? We'll give, uh, Jim a minute, Mr. Kurtzewski, a minute to get to the podium. Mayor Kurtzewski, you are recognized.
Good morning. Uh, the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue's requested legislation is worse than the unfunded mandates that have been legislatively imposed on local governments by our state of Florida government. It actually encourages governmental inefficiencies and wasteful spending, and therefore would effectively increase taxation upon residents and businesses. Let me explain further. I was employed by FPL for 46 years. Decades ago, I began to experience significant organizational downsizings to improve efficiencies and reduce costs to our customers. One key leadership goal and achievement was to create interdependence between departments. The result, an interdependent working department environment increased teamwork and efficiencies. Governments and governmental agencies must work the same way to best serve the public. I've always valued that and promoted that as an elected official with the town. You know, tomorrow, we will be celebrating the topping off construction milestone for our new town fire station on US 1. This station is across the street from a Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Station at Burnett Reynolds Park. On October 1st, 2026, Jupiter Fire Rescue will begin full-service operations. We have continued to offer Palm Beach County Fire Rescue leadership to cover the one, less than one call a day that will remain to serve unincorporated areas from that station via a no-cost mutual aid agreement. That's the way we should be intimately, uh, working together. I don't know why this bill is, uh, is being requested. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has pledged to keep that station fully operational for at least a year. Done so publicly to the county commission. I would be ashamed as an elected official that that's happening, that we're going to have competing stations across the street, one that has less than one call a day volume that we can serve at no cost. Please, further, funeral, future annexation agreements have been in place with the county for years, decades, and handful of those include small commercial properties within a mile of the two stations. The long-term plan was, when they wanted to redevelop, they would, and, they would voluntary, request voluntary annexation, and then seek development approvals through the town zoning codes. So, you know, there are many consequences of this, adverse consequences, and we certainly hope that the delegation, uh, follows the request that you just heard to defer this. Let us work together as adults on mutual aid the way it has worked a long term. And please encourage Palm Beach County to shut down the fire station, let us cover it and save the cost to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Marcy Tinsley, City of Palm Beach Gardens, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and good morning, Ms. Chair and members of the delegation. First, I want to thank you for your service and truly appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this morning. As you know, I'm honored to be mayor of Palm Beach Gardens, and I'm here on behalf of our entire city council and our fire department to express our opposition of the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU bill. We believe this bill is a direct attack on home rule. It was submitted at the last minute, as you heard, with no discussions, no coordination with municipalities, and no facts to support it. This bill negatively impacts the 20 municipalities that currently have their own fire department like ours. It is a double taxation, which defies the Florida Constitution and Section 200 of Florida statutes. The local county bill states that municipality would have, would be paying the MSTU, not the property that's annexed. Therefore, if a community annexes into our city, that community would have to be served by Palm Beach County Fire, but all other properties within our municipality, except that property that was annexed, has to pay the MSTU tax. That doesn't make any sense. And since 2018, 80% of our annexed properties were voluntary. These are communities and property owners that have chose to annex into our city for a high-level quality of service. If passed, all other counties in the state of Florida will have the freedom of choice to annex, except ours. In addition, our comprehensive plan defines municipalities' level of service and maps out annexation areas. This is required to be updated every five years per Florida statute. The county has the opportunity to plan and to object if it feels necessary. This bill states it is for public safety, but in fact, it creates the exact opposite, confusion among our fire departments by care, carving out some areas that must be served by the county and the balance to be served by our own municipality. The county and Palm Beach Gardens have collaborated very well through automatic aid. In fact, Palm Beach Gardens has responded to double the amount of calls in unincorporated county than the county has for us. We have never asked for compensation. In closing, we respectfully urge you to reject this bill. It's unnecessary and risks disrupting the system that already works, our automatic aid and mutual aid agreements. These partnerships are proven, they're efficient, and built on collaboration and trust. Let's not create confusion or jeopardize what keeps our community safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Chelsea Reed, you're recognized.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, as, as you heard, my name is Chelsea Reed. I'm so proud to serve on the city council in Palm Beach Gardens in my hometown, and also have had the pleasure on serving on multiple boards with you, state, national, and local. And again, I'm here to speak in strong opposition against the proposed local bill relating to Palm Beach County's Municipal Service Taxing Unit for Fire and Emergency Services. With a tremendous amount of respect and hope for real collaboration, we have to say this has the making of a really bad bill. And it's being pushed through without due process, which feels a lot like building a plane while you're flying it without being given the toolkit to even have a plane built. So beyond taking away a resident's ability to choose local freedoms, constitutional violation, attack on home rule, and possibly double taxation, it is just simply bad for the collaboration between our cities and our county we've worked so hard for. In practice, it would fundamentally alter how municipalities and the county work together. And if it does go forward, an ILA won't save it. The last word in ILA is agreement, and we don't even have that to start. It would probably lead to an avalanche of lawsuits, acrimony, and dissolution of the collaboration we have all worked so hard on these last few years. And budgetary shortfalls will certainly be affected by having to pay lawyers to fix what we can fix now. We have data, as you've heard, actionable analysis showing the efficacy of mutual aid as it is, and we've had zero opportunity to work with our Palm Beach County Union, share information. And this is all for the one goal of safety for all of our residents in the area, whether they're municipal or an unincorporated. They just need the help. Last year, I had the honor of serving as president of Palm Beach County League of Cities, and each president gets to choose a theme. Molly's put us to work, as you can see, and my theme was collaboration. And with pride, I can say it worked. And the proof of that is our countywide transportation plan. I encourage all of you to take a look at the logo for the transportation plan, and you will see the number 39 in the center, and I think you know why. It denotes the collaboration between the county and all 39 municipalities, and has had a worthy effect. It's the promise and hope of changing how our residents move around the county and beyond. But efforts like this proposed local bill relating to Palm Beach County's Municipal Service Taxing Unit for Fire and Emergency Service would make this collaboration crumble. It's been built on trust, negotiation, and shared responsibility. So I respectfully urge that you see this bill as not a small administrative fix, but as a precedent that damages the partnership between our county and municipalities. Should you decide to pursue this draft, or third draft, and have it become a bill, we ask you to please keep it here in the county so that we have the opportunity to work on it before it goes to Tallahassee. It might have started badly, but we have the opportunity for it to end well. It needs to stay here so we can work on it together and keep collaborating. So please oppose this bill, protect the collaborative spirit that has long made Palm Beach County's local government strong, responsive, and united in service to our, all of our residents. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Councilwoman. R. Max Lowman, you are recognized.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. This proposed bill is legally indefensible. It's an overreach. It directly conflicts with the comprehensive general laws of Florida, violates the core principles of the Florida Constitution, and is predicated on a demonstrably false process. You're being told that this is about public safety and the provision of fire rescue services. I'm not going to say that's a misstatement of the truth. It's a lie. This is quite transparently a bill about protecting a tax base and a source of revenue. Period. Paragraph. End of story. That's what this is about. And it does so on the backs of your constituents. It subjects them to double taxation. It cheats them out of the right of self-determination to choose whether or not they want to be part of a municipality or not. If this passes, they will be subject to the MSTU on top of the municipal ad valorem. They will continue to pay for a service that don't believe the hype. They're not going to get it. A lot of the, a lot of the, uh, areas that are in our future, our future annexation areas for these municipalities, they're getting the, the lion's share of their, their fire rescue service from the cities already through mutual aid. Cabana Colony in Palm Beach Gardens is a perfect example. 99.5% of all fire rescue calls to Cabana Colony are answered by a green fire truck from Palm Beach Gardens, not a red one. If you want to solve a financial problem, reimburse the city of Palm Beach Gardens the $300,000 they spend a year responding to those fire rescue calls. Their taxpayers pay for that. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue doesn't show up, it's a green fire truck. Because that's what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be about public safety. It's supposed to be about public aid and taking care of the public. This is a taxing bill, nothing less. It directly contravenes and effectively nullifies the Municipal Annexation Act, set forth in 171.093. Second, it represents an unconstitutional infringement on home rule. And third, is an improper and unconstitutional, constitutionally suspect use of local bill to subvert uniform law. This bill's stated justification, as I said, is not to avoid adverse impacts. It's a, it's a, an attempt to, uh, to protect a taxing authority. That's its true purpose. And this issue has been litigated before. I would suggest that you, I would recommend to you respectfully that you look at the case of Sarasota County, Sarasota County versus the town of Longboat Key. Where the county tried, what the county tried to do there through a charter amendment is very similar to what this bill would try to do through legislation, and the Florida Supreme Court denied that and overturned it. This also, this bill would confer a special privilege on Palm Beach County, and I would recommend that you look at Longwood Medical Center versus Seeger. It's also a Florida Supreme Court case. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Kimberly Rothenberg, City of West Palm Beach, you are recognized.
Good morning, and I thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns for the City of West Palm Beach. My name is Kimberly Rothenberg, and I've been asked to come and speak on their behalf. Um, as you've heard from most of the speakers here today, the county's concerns are fully addressed by Florida Statute 171, which outlines the processes that are required for annexation. That statute is a statute that was adopted with the stated purpose to be uniform throughout the state, to ensure efficient provisions of urban services, and to ensure that the areas are not annexed unless the municipal services can be provided to that annexed area. The City of West Palm Beach is one of those cities that has its own fire rescue and EMS services. And we, when we annex properties, are required, like all other jurisdictions, to do a feasibility study and to decide whether or not those services can be provided to the annexed areas. In, in all of our cases, we provide our own fire rescue and EMS services. In addition to the problems with, the conflict with Chapter 171, there's also a conflict with the powers that are provided to the county to create the Municipal Taxing Service Unit that states that that service unit is to be provided to unincorporated areas of the county here. Uh, and if municipalities want to provide those services, they are entitled to consent. This purpose of this bill is to remove that collaborative process of consent and to require cities to do this. The City of West Palm Beach, like those here before you today, ask that you deny this bill and, um, allow us to collaborate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Melisse Sundstrom, Town of Jupiter. Thank you for hosting us today. Welcome.
Thank you for having us, and like I said, good practice for Thanksgiving dinner. Good morning, everyone. Some quick context on the Town of Jupiter. Jupiter recently decided to start its own fire department after using Palm Beach County Fire Rescue for a number of years. We did this after a thorough financial analysis, and it showed residents could save between 50 and 70 million dollars. Our decision was affirmed by Judge Reed Scott and by Jupiter voters in our most recent election. Cost mattered in this decision, but so did bringing our police and fire together. You see, we've got Jupiter Police, but Palm Beach County Fire, and we wanted them to work for better coordination, efficiency, and response. The draft bill says annexed property remains with county fire, and so Jupiter, this may lead to less coordination with our local police, as the two belong to different parts of government. It does, the bill does allow an escape clause with "may", um, but there's no criteria, no appeal process, no detail there. And that makes planning difficult. It basically pushes the burden of long-term planning and trying to understand this to the municipalities. So I'm still trying to understand the why behind the bill. The package lists three reasons: to help the county fire with longer age planning and budgeting, to protect the MSTU from adverse financial impacts, and to avoid adverse health and safety impacts for residents of unincorporated areas. Let me try to explain this from a Jupiter perspective. First is planning and duplicative infrastructure. The bill package says annexation is increasing, but the county's own annexation report says that annexations have declined since 2004. There's even a chart showing annual decline. And the vast majority of these are actually voluntary. Over 90% of all annexations since 1989 are voluntary. Jupiter annexed exactly one parcel recently, and it was .22 acres, quite large, you see. And it was entirely surrounded by the town. So these are small parcels that volunteer or voluntarily annex to us. They're not the large parcels, and there's no distinguishing between large or small or how these are done in the bill. As for duplicative infrastructure, as you heard earlier, when Jupiter begins operating its own fire department, one nearby county station will average only one call per day, per county data. We offered to buy, lease, or partner on that station, even to cover nearby unincorporated pockets for free, but each offer has been declined. The county will continue to fully staff the station for at least a year after Jupiter begins operating. I know that Jupiter will no longer be in the MSTU then, and I do not know how this will impact MSTU taxpayers. Second, the financial picture. The MSTU rate is 3.451, much larger than our entire town's tax rate, which funds police, roads, parks, and more, which is 2.389. As values have gone up in recent years, both in county and many municipalities, we've reduced our tax rate, but the MSTU never has. The county is transitioning to a 24/72 schedule with a large staffing increase without changing its tax rate, which suggests that the rate might be quite healthy. But then the picture is cloudy. On the other hand, in an FY '25 County Fire Rescue budget presentation, it appears to show the MSTU projects a downfall in 2019, 2029, if I can just quickly finish this thought. Annexations aren't the only thing that impact revenue in service areas. Since COVID, growth has gone everywhere. I would imagine growth in unincorporated areas may offset the annexations like Jupiter's .22 acres, but that analysis is not being done. We need a holistic financial... We need a holistic financial review of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Victor Martin, you are recognized.
Good morning, delegation. My name is Victor Martin. I'm a director for the NCNC, North County Neighborhood Coalition. Twenty-three gated communities, 42,000 residents with a voting rate of 93%. I'm speaking in strong opposition to the proposed municipal service tax. Number one, undermining, and I was also served on the Regional Resilience Task Force when it was developed. Number one, undermining regional resilience. Our community has invested significant time and resources into the Regional Resistance Tax Force. Our objective was to create efficient, coordinated, and sustainable long-term strategies. This tax, however, threatens to negate those hard-won achievements. By imposing an immediate broad financial burden without addressing undermining systematic coordinations, this tax pushes us towards short-term fiscal fixes rather than sustainable regional stability. It is a step backward in resilience. Number two, the burden of double taxation. We must address the fact that this is essentially a double tax. Residents already fund the necessary municipal services through property taxes and other established revenue streams. The introduction of this service tax compounds the financial obligation, punishes the very people who rely on these services and who already contribute their fair share. Number three, the focus on individual agency positioning. Our mandate as leaders should be to ensure the best is being achieved for the entire community and region. This means fostering inter-agency cooperation and shared efficiencies, not creating new revenue streams that allow agencies to operate in isolation and at the undue expense of the taxpayer. Number four, erosion of residents' rights. Finally, this tax takes away the rights of our residents to decide their own governance and financial contributions. Taxation without direct democratic input or clear justifiable community mandate is fundamentally problematic. We are removing the residents' rights to determine the trajectory of their government's finding and priorities. Conclusion: I urge the rejection of this bill. We must hold ourselves accountable to the goals of the region: resilience, fiscal responsibility, and democratic governance. We need solutions that promote collaboration, efficiency, and fairness, not mechanisms that supply shift, mechanisms that simply shift the financial burden to our already taxed residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linda McDermott, Town of Jupiter. Good morning. You are recognized.
I'm a resident of Jupiter. I just recently read a lot of what's going on with this bill. I still feel there's not enough data that I, as a resident. I'm a past government worker. I just retired after 35 years. Very proud to have been a budget manager and done various things. I believe in fire municipalities working together, and I'm hoping that if this bill goes through, that it will cause everybody to work together, specifically my own town of Jupiter with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. This has been one of the biggest issues that I have ever seen in my over 40 years of living in Jupiter. We need a common ground. I hope that this bill doesn't separate us more, but we need more data. We don't need double taxation. I understand, and I am concerned about the first year that our Jupiter Fire Rescue is on their own, that Palm Beach County Fire Rescue will be filling in more than their 10% share of mutual aid. Mutual aid is just that, mutual aid. And we want to count on each other without nickel-and-diming our residents. But we do need fairness. I believe that the county budget needs fairness, and I just hope that this bill isn't something that has come up because of the talk of reducing taxes for homestead, and there needs to be another way to find money, okay? Because focusing on this, while I was very opposed for local Jupiter creating its own fire department, because I love Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, but because it's on its way, I want us to work together. But I don't want this bill to be double taxation for those people who I visit, those businesses that I visit in Jupiter. I don't want another thing separating us. We need fiscal accountability. We need to know what the specifics are. We need to know what the budget, the dollars, what we're talking about. And every municipality in this county has a right to be at the table, to know what's going on. We need a lot more information before this bill is drafted or even thought of being approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fred Angelo, welcome. You are recognized.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning, delegation. So this started many moons ago between a collegiate fight between my friend Jamie Tickham, who used to be the League of Cities, and myself. Back in 1995, cities would annex areas and just leave roadways to the county. Palm Springs annexed both sides of Congress Avenue, but every car wreck that happened on Congress Avenue from basically Forest Hill Boulevard all the way down past 10th Avenue was left for the county to service. So we had to keep a station in service there. As time went on, they started to realize they didn't have the resources to provide the service outside of that roadway, and the county started providing that service. And eventually, they merged into the county, and we've had a great relationship with that city ever since. I'm retired now from the fire department. I live here just outside of Jupiter. I retired from the fire station right around the corner. But just to give you an idea of this, Jupiter is building fire stations right now less than one mile from another fire station. I heard a gentleman just a minute ago say double taxation. The residents of Jupiter have paid for this service already, and now they're building a fire station, three fire stations, all within one mile of a current fire station. When the county has brought in these other services, we took the fire chief all the way down to the dispatcher, to the support service people, all into our system. We kept their jobs. We found places for them, and as the county's grown, they've been able to grow. I came in from the Town of Lantana, the very first merger. But what's most important here is residents being safe and firefighter safety. 9/11 taught us three things. We need common communications, not ones that we patched together but on the same one. We also need the same number of people on every fire truck, every ambulance truck, because we use ambulances in coordination with fire trucks, meaning that's our rescue. They do the forcible entry on a house when it's on fire, then the other guys from the engine come in behind them. Well, if we don't have the same number of people, mutual aid, as was just discussed, is not mutual. So many times, the county's on these scenes, and we're going with another city, and we're like, okay, they're sending a fire truck. We have to ask our dispatch, how many people are on it? How many people are on the rescue? Because if they're only sending one or two people, we need to get another unit coming. The county has 50-plus fire stations. There's no match for municipalities here. The cost of service, when you put it across the county, is much less. The MSTU sounds higher because as cities annex, like right here in Jupiter, they leave areas like the one we're sitting in, Limestone, which was underserved and underprivileged. They don't annex this area. They annex the one right next to it and leave this pocket so the county has a station there. So we're trying to create a regional system which lowers costs, stops competitiveness of union contracts. This is what we need to do. So you need to stay forward with this and be leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members and senators, that concludes public comment. We are not going into debate, but if anyone would like an opportunity to comment, please let me know. Seeing no comments. Senator Bernard. Oh, I apologize. Senator Bernard, didn't see you.
Thank you very much.
You're recognized.
Vice Chair, just want to make sure, I know that we're postponing this vote. Will this issue be brought back this year, or is this something for a future year?
Thank you for the question, Senator. That is really a question for Representative Snyder, but my understanding is he is moving forward this year, assuming once we get the bill out of drafting, we can come to some kind of agreement. That is my understanding.
Follow-up, Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
So would we have another delegation meeting to bring that up?
Yes, we would.
Okay. One more question.
You are recognized.
You know, what I hope that, you know, if we're going to bring this up, I'd love for us to just have a full discussion on this issue, you know, almost like as the only item, so in that way, we can hear from the cities and the county to really flush this issue out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other senators? Okay. Show that bill temporarily postponed. Members, we're going to go a little bit, and senators, we're going to go a little bit out of order on our agenda. And next up, we are going to do a local bill that is eight on your agenda, Regulation of Fireworks Within the Town of Laxahatchee Groves. And Mayor Anita Kane, you are recognized.
Good morning, members of the delegation. As was mentioned, I'm Anita Kane, currently the mayor of the Town of Laxahatchee Groves. I'm here today to respectfully request your support with our bill granting the town local authority over the sale and use of fireworks only within our agricultural residential zone during three specific holidays. This bill mirrors the successful local legislation enacted for the Village of Wellington in 2021. It creates a narrow exception to the state presumption, allowing our town to restrict fireworks use where they pose the greatest risk to our residents, our animals, and heavily wooded rural landscape. Under the bill, the agricultural use of fireworks and public permitted fireworks displays approved by PBSO and Fire Rescue would still be allowed. Laxahatchee Groves, for those of you who don't know us, is a unique rural equestrian community, home to hundreds of horses and several renowned wildlife and conservation areas. On holidays like New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and Fourth of July, unregulated fireworks cause extreme distress and danger to animals. Startled horses can injure themselves or their riders. An exotic species can panic, causing injury or even death from shock. Ensuring the safety of these animals is not only the right thing to do, but it's also important to our local economy. According to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, the 2025 Winter Equestrian Festival alone, which takes place just minutes from our town, generated $538 million in economic impact into the region. In addition, our town is more heavily wooded than most municipalities in Palm Beach County, and it maintains a very dense tree canopy. This heightens the community's wildfire risk, which is demonstrated by the continued operation of a Florida Division of Fire Safety facility within our town's boundaries. So this bill is common sense. It's a preventative measure that protects public safety, valuable livestock, and the characteristics that define the very identity of Laxahatchee Groves. We ask you for your support today and want to specifically thank Representative Weinberger for her agreeing to sponsor this legislation. Thank you for your consideration and continued partnership with the Town of Laxahatchee Groves.
Thank you. Members, senators, any questions of the presenter? Is there any public comment on the bill? Representative Weinberger, would you like to make a motion to approve the local bill?
Please vote up and wave close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Show the bill passed. Thank you. All right. We're moving on now to number three on the agenda. Palm Beach County Child Care Facilities and Family Child Care Homes, Alessandro Marchisani. Am I saying that right, Alessandro? Marchisani? You are recognized.
Good morning, Vice Chair Skidmore, and members of the legislative delegation. I'm Alessandro Marchisani, the Legislative Affairs Director for Palm Beach County. I'm here today to present the Child Care Capacities Local Bill on behalf of Palm Beach County Department of Health. We have Alyssa Solomon from the Department of Health, if you have any questions on the bill. So in Palm Beach County, the Department of Health licenses and oversees childcare facilities in Palm Beach County, whereas in 63 of 67 counties, the Department of Children and Families oversees that responsibility. This local bill would align the maximum capacity requirements for children allowed in these childcare facilities with current DCF requirements. This legislative change would address the childcare shortage in Palm Beach County and allow our small businesses in the childcare space to have more options and be able to expand their businesses. It is a win-win for our families as well as our small businesses. I humbly request your support, and I'm curious if you have any questions, and we can bring Alyssa up as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Senator Berman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just am curious, why is Palm Beach County one of only four counties that licenses the childcare facilities instead of having DCF license them?
You're recognized.
Yes. Senator Berman, that is how the system was designed. I can bring Alyssa up to bring more context.
Alyssa, you're, please, you're recognized for an answer.
Sure. Good morning. My name's Alyssa Solomon. I'm the senior attorney with the Department of Health. This has actually been in effect since 1959, when the local bill was originally passed. It delegated the county as the local licensing agency. The county has worked with the Department of Health, and we are taking care of regulating the child cares within the county. As far as context for back in the 50s, I don't actually have that. However, I am pleased, and I think we have a great working relationship with our providers. I think it's going really well from my own personal experience. There is a state law that says annually now, it's actually a new law, annually, the county commission has to make the determination if they still would like to keep it as a local licensing agency, but it is by statute. It would have to be, I think, overturned in order for it to go back to DCF.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Senator Harrell, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I know in the past, we have made some changes in that licensing to make sure that our children are safe in these different facilities. And how does the Palm Beach County regulation differ from state regulation?
You're recognized.
So right now, regarding numbers, there is a hard cap at six children. DCF has recently changed that, and it's a little bit of an LSAT puzzle as far as the numbers go, because it depends on the age of the children. I can give that information to you if you'd like. I just want to pull up where I wrote it down, because like I said, it's a little bit of a, of an LSAT question. But basically, DCF's current rules are that there's a max of four children from birth to 12 months, or max of three children from birth to 12 months, but no more than six, or maximum of six preschool children, but no more than, all must be greater than 12 months, or a maximum of 10 if no more than five are preschool age, and of those five, no more than two are 12 months. So like I said, it's a little bit of a math problem. But I think it's important for everyone to realize, too, we have a bit of a shortage, especially in reliable aftercare programs, as, you know, there's an influx of parents working who rely on that service, and the needs of children that are older, that are elementary school age, which would still fall under the family childcare rules if they're going to somebody's home afterwards, require, or I would say would allow for more children to be there safely, as long as they're supervised appropriately. Our capacities are not changing for what we allow related to the number of adults to children would still have to remain the same. There would also be other restrictions, such as zoning, or if the home is on sewer, there are those other restrictions that might cap the number. But we believe that it can be done safely. It's done safely in the other 63 counties.
Thank you very much. I know it's a little complicated, but I'd like to see the differences. What, you know, are the numbers higher on the state side? Are the ages the same? If you could get us a comparison of that, so we know exactly what state regulation is versus local regulation now.
Okay, so you're looking for not the state statute that has the numbers, but the actual homes, like how many children are in? I just want to make sure I understand the request, so I can...
Senator Harrell, you're recognized for follow-up.
Thank you. No, I'm looking to see the difference in local regulation versus state regulation. Does the state allow more numbers of children? Are there timeframes that are different? What is the licensure? How does the licensing in Palm Beach County differ? And which is, allows, I mean, numbers-wise, especially and specifically for requirements for the facility as to safety?
Sure. The requirements...
You're recognized.
Sorry. When it is delegated to the Department of Health, we have to be as strict as DCF. We can never be less strict than DCF. There are some areas where we have decided to be more strict than DCF's rules and regulations. So there's a bunch of different areas, but we will never, we are never less strict than DCF. We are required by law. This would just match us with DCF related to their numbers. So DCF currently allows... So DCF currently allows for more kids in family childcare homes. We are limited to six, so we are just requesting that we could follow DCF if a provider wanted to.
Thank you. Members, senators, any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the bill? So is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Show the bill passed. Thank you.
Members and senators, we're on Item 4 under local bills. Palm Beach County Construction Industry Licensing Board. Alessandro, you can stay right where you are, and you are recognized to present the bill.
Good morning once again, Vice Chair Skidmore and members of the legislative delegation. I'm here today to present the Construction Industry Licensing Board, which will be sponsored by Representative Edmonds. In Palm Beach County, the Construction Industry Licensing Board oversees contractor licenser to ensure public safety and welfare. The legislative change in this local bill would require that applicants to the board have both applied and passed their examination in order to have successfully applied to the board. This change would align with best practices and industry standards by streamlining the process, reducing administrative workload, and ensuring that only qualified applicants are truly applying to the construction board. And that is the local bill. Thank you. I humbly request your humble support.
Any questions? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to approve the local bill? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, is there any debate? Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Show the bill passes.
We are on Number 5, South Indian River Water Control District. Bob Berman, Palm Beach County Estates Landos Association. You are recognized to present the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the delegation. I'm here respectfully requesting an amendment to special legislation for the South Indian River Water Control District to correct an anomaly in the voting structure. South Indian River Water Control District is located in northern, northwestern Palm Beach County, and you were provided with a map. It's geographically divided by the C-18 Canal, Canal C-18. And the physical divide also serves as something of a cultural divide as well. West of the C-18 Canal is the area most commonly referred to as Jupiter Farms, which is a more rural agricultural equestrian environment. The area east is Palm Beach Country Estates, which is much more urban, suburban in nature. The, because of the distinct differences in the areas, the district has always maintained completely separate budgets for each area. However, the current voting structure calls for all landowners within the district to vote for the supervisors. The area west of the C-18 Canal is comprised of at least minimum one acre lots, some as large as 50 and 60 acres. Palm Beach Country Estates is all almost uniformly one acre lots, which results in a disparity in the ability to vote. Beginning in 2010, according to the current legislation, one supervisor is supposed to be elected to represent that area. However, it has not been possible. Candidates sponsored and supported by the area east is, cannot overcome the voting structure the way it is. The proposed change to legislation provides landowners both east and west of the C-18 Canal the ability and the responsibility to represent the interests of their respective areas. The proposed legislation provides fair and equal representation by the landowners that they're empowered to represent. I actually cannot think of an example anywhere in politics where the voters do not elect the people that they're there to represent them. So also additionally, there are some other minor changes, or I call them just housekeeping issues. There's some antiquated language within the bill, and there's some clarification that needed to be placed. So thank you for Representative Weinberger for sponsoring the bill, and I ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Members and senators, are there any questions? Any questions of the presenter? Is there any public comment on the bill? Seeing no public comment, would someone like to make a motion to approve the local bill?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, thank you. Members, is there any debate? All those in favor of the local bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, show the bill passes. Thank you.
Okay, West Palm Beach Firefighters Pension Fund, Bonnie, Ms. Bonnie Jensen, you are recognized.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the West Palm Beach Firefighters Pension Fund. They are presenting a bill, the city of West Palm Beach, and the union, the West Palm Beach Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 727, agreed in collective bargaining that they would make a benefit change, which was an increase in the benefit multiplier. The changes can't be accomplished locally because the pension plan is a creation of the Florida Legislature, and the new benefits were developed in part to keep and to retain their employees. The cost of the benefit changes will be paid for locally at the city of West Palm Beach. Additionally, the plan has been updated to reflect some changes in the law since the last time we went forward to the state for a change, including changes in the federal tax law. There are several housekeeping technical changes that we also made in the bill, and I think that, you know, the summary certainly gives you the details of those changes. Thank you to Representative Deborah Tendrich for agreeing to sponsor the bill, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Is there any public comment on the bill? Representative Tendrich, would you like to make a motion to approve the local bill? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Members and senators, is there any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of passage of the local bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay? Show the bill passes. Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you.
Last one, West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund. You are still recognized, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. So I'm here on behalf of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund. Similar to the firefighters, they have made changes to their pension plan due to collective bargaining negotiations with the Florida State Lodge, the Fraternal Order of Police. They've also agreed to increase their multiplier. And so the changes for them as well cannot be accomplished locally because the pension plan is a creation of the Florida Legislature. These benefits were negotiated to keep and to retain employees. The cost of the benefits will be paid for locally. The changes to the benefit plan, again, follow that benefit change of the 3.2% multiplier. Some administrative and technical changes, as well as law changes, to incorporate some state law provisions as well as some federal tax law changes.
Thank you.
And thank you to Representative Tendrich for agreeing to sponsor the bill.
Any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Representative Tendrich, would you like to make a motion to approve the local bill? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Members, is there any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of passage of the local bill, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Seeing none, show the bill passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, members and senators, while I kind of got my rhythm there. It took me a minute. We are now in our presenters. I think we still are on time, so those who are on the agenda for presenting, you have three minutes. If there are any members of the audience who wish to speak, please fill out a card and give it to Kariana, who's here in the front row. We want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity if they desire. Okay, we are on, Mayor Molly Young, you are recognized again. Welcome back. On deck is Nick Cannon.
Hello, good morning again, Vice Chair and delegation. I am taking my mayor hat off and putting on my Molly Young, President of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, hat on, joined today by many of our board members. You have a copy of our legislative agenda, so I'm not going to read every statement on there. I'll quickly touch base on a couple items, though. Property tax reform. We all want to provide relief to our constituents, and fiscal responsibility is of the utmost importance. But tax reform cannot be at the expense of reducing the level of services that our constituents expect and deserve. Homestead property tax relief will hit each city differently because the percentage of homestead value is so varied. For example, Lake Clark Shore's homestead taxable value is at about 64%, while Mangonia Park is only at 10%. Additionally, the Save Our Homes differentials acts as another exemption. All but three Palm Beach County cities have at least six figures of average homeowner benefits, and six cities in Palm Beach County have more than a million in benefits. The reality is that the services we provide for our constituents is not free. Paying property taxes is an investment into your community. If it gets drastically reduced or eliminated, about 47% of Florida cities will have incredibly difficult budget conversations that far surpass just tightening the belt and cutting waste. The league believes that the true threat is not property taxes, but homeowners' insurance. Thanks to recent state tort reform, we have seen some rate decreases in the insurance market, but it's not nearly enough. Florida property insurance rates have increased sharply since 2020, with some estimates suggesting by 50 to 75%. I can personally say, when I add up my property, flood, and auto, it far surpasses what I pay in property taxes. I know I receive a tangible benefit every day from the taxes I pay. I cannot say the same for what I pay annually in insurance costs. Onto SB 180. While we understand and very much appreciate the well-intended goals of this bill, the broad scope in Sections 18 and 28 have created unintended challenges for many municipalities that were not affected by recent storms. Long-term projects that were thoughtfully planned and funded with taxpayer dollars can no longer move forward under the current restrictions. Communities like Jupiter, Palm Beach, North Palm Beach, Lake Park, DeCuesta, and many more have been forced to pause or repeal comp plan and zoning amendments. These setbacks put years of public input, public investment, and local progress at risk. We're eager to work with you this session on a glitch bill to find a balanced approach that respects both the state's objectives and our local needs. Lastly, municipal elections. Mandating that all municipal elections along with, aligned with statewide November elections in even number years would affect over half of Florida cities, forcing a uniform schedule that overrides our local charters. Impacts include crowded ballots dominated by state and national races, making it difficult to compete for voter retention, higher costs for municipalities, logistical challenges for cities with staggered terms, and complications for runoff and municipal recall elections. Again, thank you so much for your time this morning. We really value your partnership. We are here to support you this session and are looking forward to working alongside you. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam President, for that question. Senator Bernard?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. You had mentioned the municipal elections. Is there a way to work with the League of Cities in terms of the qualifying periods in the county where you've got 39 different municipalities and 39 different qualifying periods? And also with the petition methods, and so is there a way to work with the supervisor elections to see what can be done regarding that?
Yeah, I think that's...
You're recognized.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
If it's acceptable, Vice Chair, I would love to call Mayor O'Connor up to the podium. He is the expert board member on municipal elections. Is that possible?
Mayor O'Connor, you're recognized.
Thank you.
No, absolutely. I don't see a problem with working with supervisor elections on behalf of the league to try to get all the cities in sync in terms of qualifying periods. But to be completely candid, that the problem here is if we move the municipal elections to the November, it's going to create a hyper-partisan situation where every one of our seats as mayor and council members, they're non-partisan seats. That's really what it comes down to, is if it's going to be a down ballot across the board, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Follow up. You're recognized.
Yeah, I don't support moving, you know, the municipal elections from November to, from March to November. I like the March dates. But like I know for me regarding the qualifying, what I'm concerned more about is these petitions, cities that accept petitions, and working with the SOE this week, you know, you've got petitions that are, some cities require petitions, and she's got 60 days to certify other petitions. And some of these cities, they have one week to allow you to get petitions, and they all have to be submitted to the clerk. I just feel like there's things that we can do to kind of like address that.
You're recognized.
I could not agree with you more. As somebody who qualified yesterday at noon, you know, my qualifying period was yesterday at noon, dead-ended and running unopposed, by the way. You know, you've, same as Green Acres, you've got other cities that are this Friday at noon. There's certainly something to be said for us all being in sync, and I think that would, you know, help out the supervisor as well.
Thank you. One more question, Madam?
You're recognized, Senator.
Just, I guess regarding property tax reform, is there any, from the cities, like, is there any discussion regards to what type of, any type of property tax reform that the cities would bring to the table?
You're recognized.
Or is it just insurance?
So I will say, from a Palm Beach County League of Cities standpoint, we would really like to see the House and the Senate focus more on insurance. We do think that is really the higher pressing issue from a cost standpoint. I know through FLC, we're working with them on some solutions. Right now, I am in data collection mode. I have data coming out my ears from not only statewide, but also from Palm Beach County. You heard as well, the property appraiser. So we're really kind of putting all that data together to come up with a solution. I don't think, in general, like I said, we all want to provide relief to our constituents, but we have to make sure whatever is done does not drastically reduce the level of service. I know cities are already having discussions, like, how, if this happens, how can we be more efficient to accommodate a reduction in revenue? You know, are we going to have to combine departments? Are we going to have to let some staff go? We're going to have some serious discussions about that. But yeah, we're currently working with FLC on some solutions. And I know sales tax has been floated around there as something to offset, and I think that could become a problem because you have, you know, with the two cities I gave you examples of with their homestead taxable value, you have cities that really heavily rely on their property taxes and have a very small commercial base. So those cities that might have a larger commercial base are really going to be subsidizing the others. And again, that's another example of unequitable distribution of the tax burden.
Just one more.
Yes, you're recognized, Senator.
You know, I look forward to working with, of course, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, because, you know, I know for us in the Senate, the Finance and Tax Committee is where most likely some of the discussions regarding property tax will take place. So I'd love to work with you and the league to see what we can do to address this affordability crisis that some of the residents are facing in the county. Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Senator Berman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have a question, but I just would like to make a couple comments. I, to sort of follow up with Senator Bernard's question, I would love to hear your input on the property taxes. I believe the bills are going to be heard in the House next week. I hope that the Florida League of Cities has representation there. I love that there's so much representation here, but this should be statewide, and you should be like, you know, letting your voices heard and told, your concerns about each of those. I think there's seven or eight bills at this point. And that's what happened with Senate Bill 180 last year, is there was no, at the time it came up, there was no opposition to it, and I was very concerned about it, and it passed through. So like, please come up, talk to us, tell us what your concerns are. When it happens and it goes through, and then we have to reverse it, and by the way, the sponsor has said he is going to do some kind of glitch bill on 180. But reversing it is a lot harder than trying to address it in the first place. So thank you for being... So thank you for being here and talking to the delegation, but please do this in Tallahassee and on a statewide level also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Representative Gurwick, you're recognized for a question.
My question is, what was the impetus for the discussion about municipal election date moving? Is there a threat on that right now, moving from March to November?
Yeah, again, if it's permissible, I'll bring up Mayor O'Connor, since he is the expert on the municipal elections.
You're recognized, Mayor.
Yes, that seems to be the consensus, is there's at least talks, if not actual bills, that will move... Try to make all municipal elections on the November midterm and general election ballots. That's what we're...
Follow-up. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you hear of that bill being filed, please let me know, because I have not heard any conversation about that, and I have, you know, a long line of times of dealing with municipal elections. So I see the value in some uniformity, but definitely not on a national election date because it really is a bad thing. So let me know, would you hear about that, please? That's my request of you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is Nick Cannon, and on deck is Paul Owens, Thousand Friends of Florida. Mr. Cannon, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the delegation and the guests. My name is Nick Cannon. I'm an Air Force veteran, proudly serve as the Director of Operations for the Wounded Veterans Relief Fund headquartered right here in Palm Beach County, Florida. There are over 80,000 veterans living in Palm Beach County. With that number comes an obligation, an obligation to continue our efforts to bring hope and stability back to veterans that are currently in crisis. At Wounded Veterans Relief Fund, our mission is simple, to serve those who serve us. Since 2009, we provided life-saving care to Florida's wounded and disabled veterans, helping them overcome crisis situations and rebuild their lives with dignity. We do this through two key programs, both 100% free to the veteran. Our Urgent Financial Assistance Program, which provides immediate relief for veterans facing eviction, homelessness, or loss of utilities, giving them a bridge to stability within 24 to 72 hours of approval. And our Critical Dental Assistance Program, which is the only one of its kind in the country, restoring health, confidence, and quality of life to the 85% of veterans who are in desperate need of dental care. In 2025, Wounded Veterans Relief Fund has assisted more than 1,000 veterans and their families, providing over $1.6 million in direct financial assistance across the state of Florida and over $321,000 right here in Palm Beach County alone. This year, due to the Veterans Dental Grant Program Bill, passed by you all, so thank you, Wounded Veterans Relief Fund was approved to receive funding from the state of Florida through a partnership with the Florida Veterans Foundation. Because of this partnership, we have been able to assist an additional 174 veterans with critical dental care, and currently have over 180 more veterans seeking care and being treated with over 300 dental private partners throughout the entire state. These veterans are regaining not just their smiles, but their confidence, employability, and health, again, a smile that they deserve to be prideful again. On behalf of our team, our board, and the veterans that we serve, I thank you every single day for being true patriots for our veterans, and it's an honor to continue serving our veterans every single day. So thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the whole delegation, we thank you for your service. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Owens, you're recognized. On deck, Francine Richmond.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Skidmore and delegation members. I'm Paul Owens, president of 1,000 Friends of Florida. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization advocating citizen-driven community, planning to protect our environment, our quality of life, and the economy that depends on both. We have thousands of members across Florida, including here in Palm Beach County. I've got a full list of legislative priorities with me, but I'm just going to highlight our top priority, fixing Senate Bill 180. We know that far too many Floridians have suffered the devastating impacts of hurricanes, and to be clear, the original purpose of SB 180, to help communities and residents recover from disasters, is a goal we strongly support. But SB 180 didn't stop there, as you heard from local leaders just now. Section 28 and 18 go far beyond disaster recovery to severely limit local government's ability to plan for future storms, strengthen environmental protections, or keep up with population growth. Section 28 has frozen in place local comprehensive plans and land development regulations for three years. Section 18 would renew that freeze for another year after any future hurricanes within 100 miles. Both sections prohibit updates to plans or regulations that might be considered more restrictive or burdensome for future development. This is undefined language not limited to hurricane-damaged property. It's already being used in communities throughout Florida to attack or invalidate resilience measures, environmental protections, and inflation adjustments to impact fees. Local governments have received letters from state regulators declaring their changes null and void, or they've been sued or threatened with lawsuits by developers. More than two dozen local government, including five here in Palm Beach County, are now suing to overturn SB 180 based on its unconstitutional overreach. Who can blame them? SB 180 has hogtied local leaders and the citizens they represent when it comes to planning for sustainable growth. We don't believe that's what the legislature intended. We urge you to repeal Sections 28 and 18 of SB 180. We're ready to work with you on fixing this law. You all stepped up last session to protect our state parks. We know you can do the right thing again. Please restore Floridians' right to choose the future they want for their communities.
Thank you so much. Francine Richmond? Hi, welcome. You're recognized. On deck is Gail Ladd, Sierra Club.
Good morning. I'm Francine Richmond. I'm a wife, a mother of four, a grandmother of five, an active voter, a healthcare professional for 42 years, and this morning I've come to speak about Romeo and Juliet. In Florida, the Romeo and Juliet law recognizes that teenagers who engage in consensual sex with peers should not be punished. However, when they're four years older, that's what's allowed. If they're one day over, they're put on the sex offender registry. My son was three months. There's much shame and shunning and depression that comes with this label. They're branded for the rest of their life. Everything about my son is public and available to anyone. This puts our youth in danger. As some people decide they want to harm a sex offender, many figure that they deserve it. Many young people decide suicide is better than trying to live with these shackles. Imagine if this happened to your teenager. Teenagers are put on the sex offender registry for doing what is often normal human biological behavior. Having teenage sex is not preferred, but it happens. When there's not a violent crime, no rape, no force, it's not prudent to use such harsh punishment. When a teenager is put on the registry, that punishment is a lifetime sentence. The registry is something they can never get away from. There's no off-ramp. The registry ruins young lives. My son will forever have trouble with employment, education, housing, and the ability to provide for himself. And if I'm honest as a mom, it worries me if he ever has children because of the shame and the shunning that will follow him or them. So my son was put on the registry at the height of the Me Too movement in 2017, eight and a half years ago. He was 19 years old. I can see clearly now, and I have a wealth of knowledge and experience to share. This law must be changed and some relief given to our youth. This law wrecks families and the future of our youth. I'm asking for your help in amending the Romeo and Juliet clause and make it retroactive for youth up to age 21. There are some people who may be slower to mature, and there must be a gift of time and allowance to mature. Some people may have nonverbal learning disorders or possibly be on the spectrum. I have raised four children, and they all mature differently. We have all made mistakes, and if we've not committed a heinous crime, they should be given relief. Romeo and Juliet are infamous, and yet a tragedy of youth. Putting our youth on the sex offender registry for teenage sex is also a tragedy of youth that makes them infamous.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am. I have some flyers. May I leave them on the table?
You can give them to Kariana. Great, thank you. Gail Ladd, Sierra Club, welcome. You're recognized. On deck, Thomas Lanahan, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Gail Ladd, a Jupiter resident and member of the Sierra Club Locksahatchee Group, whose membership represents Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Okeechobee Counties. Our membership thanks you for your votes last session, ensuring the passage of the State Parks Preservation Act. Our Florida state parks and public conservation lands play a key role in the preservation of the Everglades ecosystem and must be protected from development both inside and outside their boundaries. To protect water quality and ensure clean, accessible water to all Floridians, we ask that the legislature fund restoration of Florida's impaired inland and coastal waters by regulating the state's major polluters. We support legislation to reform the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission that approved a very controversial, scientifically unjustified, and public-opposed bear hunt. Commissioners are appointed by the governor and need no specific statutory or constitutional requirements for selection to the commission. Anyone can be appointed regardless of background. We're suggesting that possibly someone with actual conservation and environmental background and their background should be part of the commission, perhaps not all of them, but at least a few. We support Senator Aqueremos Smiles's regulation... Legislation to protect local municipalities, single-use plastic bans, and introduce some of the Department of Environmental Protection's recommendations on the best ways to ensure responsible single-use plastic bans. We are strongly opposed to any legislation that would overturn local municipalities and even our state parks' bans on single-use plastics altogether. And we also ask for your repeal of Sections 18 and 28 that you've heard about already. I won't go into that, but we certainly ask for that repeal. Finally, we encourage the legislature to continue and to prioritize coring lands on the Florida Forever List that have already been vetted for their conservation importance, and will advance the establishment of viable and sustainable regional wildlife corridors that are interconnected statewide. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I look forward to following your upcoming legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ladd. Thomas Lanahan, Mr. Lanahan, you're recognized. Also, just want to say good morning to Al Johnson from the State Attorney's Office. Welcome.
Good morning. Again, I'm Tom Lanahan. I'm Executive Director of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. We were established by Florida statutes. We're governed by an interlocal agreement, excuse me, among our constituent counties. That's Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, and Palm Beach Counties. Our focus areas are intergovernmental relations, urban design, economic development, transportation policy, emergency management and first responder training, and the environment. In your packages, you have some resolutions that our board has adopted regarding affordable housing, a coordinated statewide water resource investment approach, restoring the connections between the South Florida Water Management District and the St. John's River Water Management District at the very northern end of South Florida, where it debuts St. John's. There were historic flows there that are essentially a legislative boundary on a map affects restoring those. We also have a resolution in there supporting the US-27 freight rail bypass concept that would move long freight trains out of our eastern cities. And we also have, and I don't have it in your package, but I wanted to let you know that we've also are supportive of continuing the funding for Tri-Rail, which had a surprise given to them this past session. And we think that is a very important service that provides access to employment for many people, connects our region, et cetera. So we do support that. I want to let you know that we are available as a resource to you during the session, or anytime, actually. It doesn't have to be during the session. If there's an issue relevant to our field that we work in, we'd be happy to assist you with either gathering information or exploring policy choices or something like that. We're happy to do that, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. And thank you for allowing me to speak to you today.
Thank you very much. Senator Bernard, you're recognized.
Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Lanahan. Do you have a ballpark in terms of what the county's... Like the county's commitment to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, like the different counties, what's the ballpark of what they're contributing?
Sure. May I? Yes. So...
You're recognized.
Thank you. We have, so we have three main sources of funding. One of those sources is dues that each of the counties pays, and ours is 43 cents per capita. So a ballpark number for Palm Beach County is around $600,000. And so those dues allow us to number and operate the agency, but also, and provide those services, but also are important for matching some of the other funds that we bring in. Like our economic development activity is supported with federal funds, but only at 50%. So I have to bring the other 50% to bear to get that. So anyway, that's the answer.
You're recognized.
Thank you. So just to make sure, is that from Palm Beach County or some of the other municipalities?
You're recognized.
Thank you. The dues are collected on a countywide basis on the population of the entire county.
Follow-up. You're recognized.
Okay, so just the county is responsible for that ballpark of that $600,000, not any of the cities within the county?
You are recognized.
Thank you. That is correct. The check comes from Palm Beach County. It's the entire incorporated and unincorporated population of the county, and the county uses their countywide ad valorem taxes to pay that, which every resident of Palm Beach County pays.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Nicole Roche, Florida Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. Did I say it right?
Nicole Roche. Yours is correct. I have a different list. Yours is correct.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, delegation and legislators, for your hard work, especially my Florida Senator MacBernard. My name is Nicole Resch. I live in North Palm Beach. I'm a licensed registered dietitian and president-elect of the Florida Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. Our organization is celebrating 90 years of practice this year, and yet sometimes I feel like we are the best kept secret in healthcare until today. I represent more than 5,000 licensed dietitians across the state of Florida. We provide medical nutrition therapy and encourage healthy eating habits in hospitals, school systems, public health programs like WIC, and in private practice right here in our local communities. I'm actually a second-career dietitian. I spent 16 years as a personal trainer and worked in sports marketing before that. About six years ago, I went back up to Kaiser University in Port St. Lucie to earn a second bachelor's degree, completing about 1,200 hours of unpaid supervised clinical training in acute care, and passed a national board exam to earn my credentials. I came today to talk about why licensing in our field matters and what it means for the people that we serve. Dietitians follow evidence-based practice through and through telehealth. I have been able to work with patients across our state, especially in rural areas where healthcare access is limited. You might be wondering what this really looks like. I wondered the same thing while I was studying, because you don't know what you don't know. So let me tell you about a few of my patients. There's the gym goer who consumed excessive supplements and was hospitalized with kidney failure. If an unlicensed... If an unlicensed individual advised him afterward to excessively increase his protein intake to rebuild muscle, his kidneys would need to filter this additional waste product such as urea and potentially worsening his condition. There's the teen female athlete who fears eating carbohydrates after 5:00 p.m. because she thinks that they will make her fat. She weighs under 100 pounds. And the 16-year-old hockey player who was under fueling and developed disordered eating after a trainer gave him a rigid meal plan. His mom called me in desperation worried about both his mental and his physical health. The patient that is on GLP medication whose side effects prevent them from eating at all and are at risk for dehydration and muscle loss. We work closely with their physician on monitoring these side effects and helping them achieve better outcomes. And the neurodivergent client who has a list of safe, highly-processed foods because these are always consistent. They're never sour like a grape or a blueberry. A parent hears how terrible these foods are and feels overwhelmed and stressed about their child eating them. As a part, if I may?
We are really short on time, so if you can bring it in for a landing, that would be awesome.
Sure thing. So these are real Floridians who need qualified care. I'm asking for your support as we modernize our practice act. This will make it clear for consumers to know who and where to seek medical nutrition therapy, and it will allow Florida to join the dietitian compact. And I'm here for support as any nutrition-related questions arise.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Melody Sandberg McDonald. Melody Sandberg McDonald, going once. Sandra Barron, Councilmember, Pox Christie, Florida. Nope. Okay. Matthew McWaters, Advancement Associate.
He's Lisa Wayne.
Good morning, Vice Chair Skidmore and members of the delegation. I'm Matthew McWaters with Bush Wildlife Sanctuary in Jupiter, a nonprofit dedicated to protecting and conserving Florida's wildlife and natural resources through rescue, rehabilitation, and education. First, I'd like to begin by thanking you for your continued support. Your investment in our environmental education programs helps us open our new expanded environmental education facilities, spaces that are now reaching more students, teachers, and families than ever before. You also made it possible for us to offer scholarship funding to Title I schools, ensuring that access to nature-based learning is not limited by a school's financial resources. And that support has made a big difference. Last year alone, we served over 18,000 students through field trips and outreach programs. Of that, 26% received Department of Education scholarships. We also hosted 848 public programs for more than 108,000 visitors, along with private tours, community outreach events, and our Junior Naturalist Program for children who want to dig even deeper into conservation. This year, we'd once again, we're once again requesting an appropriation grant for education to help us continue and expand this vital work. At Bush Wildlife Sanctuary, education is at the heart of everything that we do. Our STEAM-based programs, that's science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, help students make real-world connections as they learn about wildlife and the environment. Whether it's a school field trip, summer camp, or outreach visit, kids experience Florida's ecosystems up close and discover how they can help protect them. We're open seven days a week with free admission, and our 150 resident animals, from eagles, owls, to bears and bobcats, provide unforgettable learning opportunities for children and adults alike. We believe that education is the key to conservation, and with your continued partnership, we can inspire the next generation of environmental stewards, ensuring that every child, no matter their background, has the chance to learn about and care for the wild Florida that we all love. Thank you for your time, your past support, and for helping us continue to nurture what's wild. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
All right. Next is Kristin Puhalain, City of Atlantis. How do you say it? Puhain? Puhain?
I don't know. That's my attempt.
Thank you. Thanks for the help. Thanks for the support, Rep. Gerwig. We're going to hear how to pronounce it.
Good morning. I'm Kristin Puhalain, City Clerk for the City of Atlantis. This is Nyleen Clark, City Clerk for the City of Pahokee. And we are here today, well, I'm here as a member of the Florida Association of City Clerks Legislative Committee and as the Chair of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association Legislative Committee. Nyleen is a member of that local committee here. And we are here today to ask your support for House Bill 247 and Senate Bill 248. These bills extend to municipal clerks, the public records exemptions already extended to city managers, city attorneys, code officers, et cetera. Those who come from city councils know the vital roles that municipal clerks play in the cities. We manage our municipal elections, we handle records management, public records requests, handle resident concerns, and other duties as required. In green acres, the city clerk's office processes passport applications. We do a lot of things, and it varies from city to city. And so today, the precedent has been set. We're simply asking that you show clerks statewide the same respect shown to other municipal administrative positions with the records exemptions. I personally can't think of a reason why anyone would need to know a clerk's personal information anyway, including spouse and children information. And to update my submitted cover memo, the Senate bill now has its committee referrals. The first-stop committees for both bills have meetings scheduled next week, but alas, they are not yet scheduled to be heard by those committees. So we're hoping that you'll help us get these moving and get one of them to reach the finish line for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that is Representative Campbell in the House, and I don't know who the Senate member is, Senate sponsor is. Melissa Mercado, and on deck, Benjamin Paley. Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you all for your time today. Before we start, we would just like to thank you for your unwavering commitment to early learning in Palm Beach County. None of what we would do would be possible without your support, and we are truly grateful. We are here on behalf of the Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County. If you don't know us already, we serve families and early care providers across the county by administering key state and federal early learning programs, including the Free Voluntary Pre-Kindergarten Program for all four-year-olds, the subsidized School Readiness Program for eligible working families, and the Early Head Start Program for infants and toddlers in high-need areas. We also operate a free childcare resource and referral service to help families find quality options, and we provide a wide range of supports to childcare providers, including training, coaching, developmental screening, inclusion services, and program quality monitoring, all to ensure that children are prepared for kindergarten and beyond. We would like to invite you to an event that is shaping the future of our community. It's the Love to Learn, Investing in Tomorrow's Workforce Today, happening on Thursday, December 4th, at the Kravis Center. Why is this a can't-miss event? Because early learning is not just about children, it's about all of us. High-quality childcare impacts workforce stability, economic growth, safer communities, and even better mental and physical health outcomes. When early learning thrives, businesses see lower turnover, families are stronger, and communities flourish. When it falters, we all feel the ripple effects. Whether you realize it or not, you are connected to early learning through the businesses you support, the families in your district, or the employers who depend on reliable childcare so their teams can show up and succeed. This is an issue that touches every industry and every household. At Love to Learn, you'll hear from Isabel Howe, author of Love to Learn. She will join a dynamic panel of exploring how early childhood education strengthens our workforce and economy. And as a special thank you, every attendee will leave with a copy of her book. We will love to see you there and continue this conversation together. Thank you again for your dedication to Palm Beach County's children and families. We look forward to connecting with you on December 4th.
Thank you very much. Senator Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you very much for, for being here and presenting to us. We appreciate the work that the Early Learning Coalition does for Palm Beach County. My question is, what toolset do you have to make sure that some of these daycare providers are getting these kids to be kindergarten-ready?
Well, there is statewide, there is the FAST Assessment that happens at the VPK level. As far as making sure that we are offering quality childcare, the Early Learning Coalition provides resources such as training, coaching. We offer, we do monitoring at all of our sites. So yes, those are the tools that I am familiar with.
Follow-up. You're recognized. So just, like, I know these are, these are taxpayer dollars, but how do you know that some of these daycare providers are getting these kids ready for kindergarten?
You're recognized.
Thank you. So we, we do assess on a yearly basis every early childcare program through a class assessment so that, that we assess that, that's a class tool that it's social, it offers social, emotional... I'm so sorry. I wasn't prepared. I apologize. It ensures that the classrooms are being offered a very positive social, emotional experience.
One last question.
You're recognized.
So just to make sure, how do you know that they're, like, after spending those dollars, how do you know that these kids are ready for kindergarten?
You are recognized.
Thank you. I, I would say the best tool that we have and the best resource that we have is the FAST Assessment. So that is offered at the VPK level. The students are assessed three times a year, and that assessment rate allows the kindergarten classroom to know what readiness level they are at.
One, sorry.
You are recognized.
So what, what happens to those providers if they're not meeting some of these FAST assessments?
You're recognized.
Thank you. So there is a, every year, they, there is an assessment tool that is used. It's a combination of the FAST Assessment, the class assessment, and the outcomes of that student. So there, there's three different pieces that are accounted for on an annual basis for every early state contract or contracted provider in Palm Beach County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think many of us will be in Tallahassee for, for the, when your event is taking place. So if we are not there, it's not because we are not supportive.
Thank you so much.
We do have a committee week then.
Thank you. Is it okay if we leave some flyers?
Certainly. Kariana would be happy to take those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Benjamin Paley. Mr. Paley? Okay. Thank you. Sean Schwinghammer. Mr. Schwinghammer, are you here? Rene Vasallo, Vasallo Law? Welcome. You're recognized.
First, I want to thank Senator Berman for navigating me to this event. Thank you to the legislature. My name is Rene Vasallo. I'm trying to introduce the Vasallo Law Bill. On November 22nd, my daughter Alyssa Vasallo, who ironically taught the autistic school here, she worked here at the L Center. She taught the special needs children here at this facility, and her father, Michael Vasallo, were shot and killed. Me and my husband's mother were also shot. My one-year-old grandbaby was in the house and was unharmed, at least physically. We just finished the trial on my daughter's boyfriend, Eric Walker, on October 10th, 2025, with double first-degree murder convictions and double first-degree attempted murder convictions in the Palm Beach County 15th Circuit Court. He was given four life sentences, November 6, 2025. The night before the shootings, he hit her, broke every window out of her car, and destroyed the house. Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office was called, and he fled. A report was made. After a few hours, he went to the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office to turn himself in, only to be turned away, saying that they had no warrant. Clearly, there was a report on him, and if that officer had taken a moment to detain him to do further research, they would have connected the dots to find that there was a report of his violence that night. So because there was no warrant, he left and came back to the house, and a half hour later, the murders took place. The Vasallo Law Bill would outline that if anyone in the state of Florida goes to any department to try to turn themselves in for any reason, that they would have to be required to have a cooling-off period to research why that person is there, or at least connect the dots. People just don't come to an agency to turn themselves in unless there is a reason. Had this law or bill existed, my family, I'm sure, would be alive today. I believe that this law has a need in our society. It did that day. I am proposing that the Vasallo, I'm proposing the Vasallo Law Bill today in front of you. I appreciate, appreciate your time. I look forward to working together on this Vasallo Law. I will not stop. In honor of my family, to save lives of future people affected by rage and violence, or simply those who just want to peacefully give up just because they did acts of crime. There's a million reasons why people turn themselves in every day, but they should not be turned away when they go to a law enforcement agency. They should be detained, just like a Baker Act. I believe they should be detained to see why they're there, at least to connect the dots. There was no warrant, but they were looking for this person after the crimes he committed the night before. Had that officer taken the time, or had the Vasallo Law been enacted, they would have held him and found out that there was, they were looking for him from the night before, and my family would still be alive. So thank you. My name is Rene Vasallo, and I, and you will hear me again. I am proposing that you look at this law, and I don't know how, I'm, I'm just a layman person, but I believe in this law, and I, I will be back.
Thank you, Ms. Vasallo. Please accept the sincere condolences of the entire delegation. Senator Berman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Vasallo, for coming to my office.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so I recommended that she come here to the delegation today. If anybody is interested, she's just starting this process. Obviously, this just all occurred. If anybody is interested in sponsoring the bill, working with her, so that we can, we can start to address this issue, and, and we are very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for having me in your office. I do appreciate it, Senator.
Thank you. Senator Bernard?
You know, so I'd, I'd love to work with you, Senator Berman.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you're gonna, are you gonna?
As the Chair of the Democratic Minority, I'm trying not to take bills, so I would love for you to do it.
Okay. So, you know, sorry with what happened to you and your family, and I'd love to work with you in our office. I think Devonique is somewhere in, in the back.
Thank you very much.
So we'd love to, on the Senate side, we'll support you to try to file legislation to assist you.
I would, I would appreciate that, and I believe it has a place in our society.
Representative Weinberger, you're recognized.
I'm so sorry. There's just no words. I cannot even imagine. I don't know if I have a bill slot open, but I want, I will do whatever I can, and I want my, my district aide is here, get us our, your card, and if we do have a bill slot open, but I will do whatever I can to help you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And work with whatever our bill sponsor may.
I just don't know where to go from here forward.
Keep communicating with us, and we can all work with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Representative Gerwick, you're recognized.
I just wanted to add that we, we do have a limit on how many bills we can sponsor in the House. The Senate does not. So even having it drafted and getting it in the, in the queue will help. I don't think I have any spots left either, any slots left.
I could come back next year. I will, I'm not stopping.
Right. Well, we want you to know that.
Thank you.
We care deeply, and we'll do everything we can to help you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Carrington, American Cancer Society. And then Public Comment is next, members and senators. And we have about eight public comments. You are recognized.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Caitlin Carrington, and I'm here volunteering with the American Cancer Society. And I'm really here on behalf of the almost 200,000 Floridians who will be diagnosed with cancer by the end of this year. That's about 2,000 every week. Think about that for a second. 2,000 Floridians are going to be diagnosed with cancer every single week. I personally am a cancer survivor. In January, I'll be 13 years cancer-free. And I always like to ask the audience, who personally or have had someone they loved been affected by cancer? Raise your hand. We lost a lot of people, but you get the, the impact, right? And so you can look around that cancer doesn't choose sides. Doesn't matter your race, your income, how old you are, your political party. So it really impacts every single family. And so I want to talk a little bit about closing the coverage gap and expanding Medicaid. So more than 11% of Floridians... So more than 11% of Floridians are uninsured, and many fall into the coverage gap where they make too much for Medicaid, but not enough for private insurance, as well as the tax credits expiring at the end of this year. That could leave more than 2 million Floridians without coverage. And cancer doesn't wait for insurance, right? So I'm asking you to please explore options to close this coverage gap and expand Medicaid. We're one of 10 states that still haven't expanded Medicaid. So I'm asking you to really consider this going into the 2026 legislative session. I also want to thank you for increasing the Mary Brogan Breast Cancer and Cervical Cancer Screening Program. We're at $3.6 million. So, the Mary Brogan Program provides free breast and cervical cancer screenings to women who cannot afford them. So they don't only help with screenings, but also follow-up care, which is critical once you have cancer. So I ask you to please continue funding this program at $3.6 million or more. And lastly, please continue to support cancer and biomedical research here in Florida. So Florida's research program helps develop tomorrow's treatment and cures. It also brings innovation and jobs and research dollars to the state. So I'm asking to please continue funding cancer research and biomedical research initiatives. And so, once again, thank you for your time and your leadership. Cancer doesn't choose sides, so I'm asking you to stand on the side of life, access, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Juan Carlos Calderon. Mr. Calderon, you are recognized. And on deck, Daniel Board.
Thank you. Good morning, Senators.
You're recognized.
Good morning, Senators and Representatives. My name is Pastor Juan Carlos Calderon. I'm here representing UNC Church, a Latino congregation serving Palm Beach County, as well as the broader Latino faith community in our region. For us, it's essential to meet both the spiritual and social needs of our communities with compassion, courage, and proactive public witness. Our most pressing concerns are the following. First, affordable housing. We call for greater investment in affordable housing, including restoring local authority to address rent costs. Adequate shelter is not just an economic issue. It is a moral and spiritual concern. It's about family stability and human dignity. Too many Floridians are being forced to choose between rent, food, and medicine. The second is immigration. We urge and enter harmful immigration policies and practices. Our churches serve many hard-working immigrant families who are vital to Florida churches, economy, and communities. Current actions are tearing at the fabric of our congregations and winding the trust that holds communities together. We ask you to take a principled stance against harmful deportation practices and to work in a bipartisan way to protect pathways to family unity and citizenship. Third is the debt penalty. Our faith teaches that every life is sacred. We are deeply troubled that Florida now leaves the nation in executions. We're fixing this year and three more scheduled. We cannot overlook the toll this takes, not only on families, but also on the corrections staff asking to carry out these acts. We call on Governor DeSantis to suspend all executions immediately and to work toward ending the debt penalty, redirecting those funds to support victims of violence and their families. And the fourth is youth justice. We support laws that protect children and their criminal justice system, including setting a minimum age for adult prosecution and limiting transfer to adult court. Research shows that the parts of the brain that control judgment, planning, and impulse control are not fully developed until, well, into their twenties. Florida should expand diversion programs and invest in rehabilitation rather than impose extreme sentences on children. And finally, many of our congregations are deeply concerned about SNAP funding. We ask that the state release funds immediately to ensure families can continue receiving food assistance regardless of what happens at the federal level. The appropriations bill should also increase SNAP funding to cover state cost-sharing requirements and ensure that Florida needed people do not lose nutrition benefit. Feeding the hungry remains one of the clearest moral imperatives of our faith. Thank you for your time and for your service for the people of Florida.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calderon. Daniel Board, you are recognized. Mr. Board?
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dan Byrd, and I represent Speak Life Performing Arts Company. Speak Life is a nonprofit organization focused on growing empathy, shifting culture, and teaching a generation to speak life. We do this by leveraging our full suite of resources for parents, educators, and students. All these pieces work together to help build resiliency and lasting change. We are also honored to share that Senator Gail Harrell is sponsoring our appropriation request in the Senate, as well as Representative Toby Overdorff in the House. Their leadership has been instrumental in elevating this initiative, and we're deeply grateful for their support. Over the last year, we've completed a full independent evaluation with Florida Atlantic University. More than 2,000 pre- and post-surveys were collected from middle and high school students. More than 90% of these students said that they now better understand what bullying is, and nearly 80% recognized its real emotional and physical harm. And the vast majority reported they would change how they respond, including more than 85% who said they would now take action to help another student. These results show a meaningful growth in empathy, awareness, and personal responsibility, aligning directly with the resiliency standards set by the Department of Education. This appropriation is focused on building out the digital infrastructure that will make Speak Life program fully accessible and effective for parents. These funds will allow us to create a robust parent-facing platform, strengthen the technology that supports secure access to resources, and streamline how we collect and share data. By improving the parent experience, we also enhance every other part of the program, making it easier for schools, families, and communities to access the consistent tools and support. It also positions us to expand the indicated side of our program, so students and families who need more targeted, lifesaving support can receive it quickly and safely. Once this infrastructure is complete, it will make implementation in districts like Palm Beach far more efficient and sustainable for years to come. We respectfully ask for your support. By advocating for inclusion of our line item in the budget this session, we'd also request any help in connecting us with Palm Beach County stakeholders for a pilot program in their schools, and champion this scalable digital model as a blueprint for statewide impact. Thank you for your service and your ongoing commitment to mental health resources across the state. I know that you have given a lot to that. I'll be around after the meeting and would love to thank you personally. I'll also be in Tallahassee this session and welcome the opportunity to meet with you in your offices to discuss this appropriation further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, sorry for the mispronunciation.
Oh, no, it's not a problem.
Great, all right. Barbara Ariv, you are recognized. And next is Kelly Warsaw. Good morning, Barbara, nice to see you again. Welcome.
Thank you, Representative Skidmore and the entire delegation for this opportunity. My name is Barbara Ariv. I'm here today to ask that you support any bills that will mitigate the use of the 287G program in Florida during the 2026 legislative session. As I believe you are all aware, Florida statute 90811 passed early this year requires county sheriffs, police chiefs operating a county jail in Florida to sign the 287G agreement that allows state and local enforcement officers to collaborate with the federal government to enforce federal immigration laws. Although not part of this statute, many municipal and university police chiefs have also signed this agreement, in multiple cases due to state pressure. The proliferation of these agreements in Florida has led to rapid and expanding number of operations in our local communities between ICE state troopers and our county sheriff. In Palm Beach County, the three agencies are working together and showing up on our streets almost daily in Lake Worth, Lantana, Boynton Beach, Jupiter, Belgrade. They're conducting traffic stops on minor infractions, going to targeted work sites, going to local restaurants and businesses. Recently, the federal government allocated millions of dollars to Florida to facilitate these operations. Our local sheriff received $1 million to sublet detention beds to ICE and to pay for transporting undocumented immigrants on behalf of ICE. The local county sheriffs also require, are required to report monthly data to the Florida Board on Immigration Enforcement. And so we know since August that about 4,700 arrests have been made. More than half of those arrests were conducted by the state and local law enforcement. For me and many others, the most excruciating aspect of these offenses against immigrants is on separation of families. All too often, one or both parents are suddenly taken away with no notice or contact with the children, left behind, and they are traumatized. At a moment's notice, children and parents are pulled apart. Children left destitute, families thrust into unspeakable hardships. Then there is the constitutional question of immigrants being detained and disappearing. The Miami Herald has reported 800 detainees that were supposed to be in Alligator Alley, show no record on ICE online database. Florida does not maintain a system to look up these detained people either. So disappearances should not be happening in the United States of America. And in conclusion, whatever your position is on immigration, the broad-scale application of the 287G agreement in Florida that calls for the mass detentions and deportations and results in family separation and disappearances is not the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariv, okay. Kelly Warsaw, you're recognized. Up next, Jessica Brayson.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here to address the delegation. I am Kelly Warsaw, and I am the Board President of a local nonprofit, Insight Through Education. I've had the pleasure of meeting, I think, all of you at some point, mostly in Tallahassee. And I want to thank specifically Senator Berman and Representative Gossett Seidman for their ongoing support of appropriations requests that we've had in the past and again this year. I wanted to just take this opportunity to more broadly share the important work that Insight Through Education is doing and has been doing for 15 years in our local community. We are the primary funder of Holocaust education programming for Palm Beach County schools. We have been a partner for the school system for the last 15 years, providing over $2.5 million in funding for student programming, professional development, and community education. This year alone, we expect to be awarding over $1 million in funding and reaching 100,000 students. We are so proud of that impact, and we could not do that without your support and the support of many of our community partners. Specifically, that work is being done through over 30 different programs that are available to teachers, students throughout the county. And in addition to public schools, also local schools, but primarily in Palm Beach County public schools, where we've reached over, I think, 116 of the 170 schools in our district. It is so important today, in a world that is faced with Holocaust denial, distortion, bullying, hate, antisemitism, prejudice, and bigotry among all groups, to have education that is based on fact, on history, on primary sources, and also opportunities to go above and beyond the state mandate for Holocaust education, for antisemitism education, and to make sure that we are starting early, which is Insight's model and has been from our very beginning, to begin in kindergarten, where the mandate starts, all the way through 12th grade, to make sure that we have the opportunity to provide engaging and memorable programming that instills the lessons of kindness, acceptance, and respect from an early age and builds on them every year in age-appropriate ways. So that by the time the students are in high school, they have, they know the difference between right and wrong. They understand how to do social, they understand social media literacy. They know what the tools are, and they can be critical thinkers. And we know that this is the model that will help make a difference when they go out into the world, whether their path is college or another path, that they have the confidence to stand up for themselves and for the rights of others. And we just want to thank you so much for the support, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Brayson, welcome, you are recognized. Up next is Jennifer Dana.
Thank you very much, and good morning to the Palm Beach County delegation. My name is Jessica Brayson, and today I'm speaking on behalf of the Junior League of the Palm Beaches as we proudly celebrate our 85th anniversary serving Palm Beach County. We are an organization of women whose mission is to advance women's leadership in meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration, and training. We have worked with many of our delegation members in the past on issues of importance to women and children in Palm Beach County. We want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your service, your public service. Our members are continually examining the needs of our community, and we strive to make a tangible impact through our issue-based community focus on education and literacy. Our members give thousands of hours each year in service to our community, and 80% of our time is devoted to improving student literacy. For example, since 2021, we have built and installed little free libraries on campuses of Title I elementary schools, so students have greater access to books they can take home. Since the start of the new year, we have added new libraries at Windbrook Elementary, Palm Beach Maritime, Grove Park Elementary, and Somerset Academy. We have now installed 25 little free libraries with the generous partnership of Hedrick Brothers Construction. Each year, we join 21 other junior leagues across Florida in Tallahassee during the legislative session to advocate for the issues important to women and children. We are here today to advocate specifically for legislation that would help students become school-ready and that would ensure students have the opportunities, services, and resources they need for all aspects of growth and well-being. For several years, we have sought support for proposals to expand access to voluntary preschool. We thank Rep. Edmonds for filing HB 345 earlier this month, and we ask that the rest of the delegation to consider ways that we can support greater access to high-quality, early-learning opportunities for Palm Beach County children. Several of our members participated in a conference last month where the Human Trafficking Coalition of Palm Beach County and the Boca Raton Police Department presented information on how civic groups like Junior League can help raise awareness of human trafficking in our community. We look forward to making their training available to our members in the coming months. And we also ask that you support the school district's policy to recommend the posting of age and developmentally appropriate human trafficking awareness and resources, information to discreet locations throughout all middle and high schools in Florida. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Dana, 911 Emergency Communications Division. And up next, Catherine Wagner Rice.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be here and speak again. For me that doesn't know me, I am Jennifer Dana. I am with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I do work at the 911 Emergency Communication Center. I wanted to give a little bit of an update, because we have some updates with our bills. Currently, Senator Pizzo and Representative Holcomb are going to be doing a bill that's going to update 1121815, which is the PTSD, where PTSD is housed. And we're looking to be included in that definition of the PTSD benefits to include any non-physical injuries. So again, so really mental health-based benefits. The second bill that we're doing on the opposite side is Senator Girl and Representative Weinberg, we're going to be doing for special risk class under the FRS, specifically special risk related to 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators. It does not change the multiplier, so it's very minimal financial impact. It's really to give us an opportunity to retire at 25 years with no repercussions for retiring so early. years with no repercussions for retiring so early. So one of the top issues in our industry is mental health. We've discussed this at length, and I got into this career because I have a heart for people and not just the people of the community, but that includes my peers, myself. And so I'm here today to advocate for my peers and all the public safety telecommunications in the state of Florida, and I am asking that you help take care of those of us who have dedicated our lives to taking care of others during everybody's most traumatic events. So we're going to be up there in Tallahassee for Palm Beach County days. I hope to see you there, but I hope to get your support whenever we go out there this year, this legislative session, to help our telecommunications with all of our benefits for mental health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine Wagner Rice. And next, Patrick Cannon.
Good morning. If I have to repeat my name, I'm Catherine Wagner Rice. My father was a police officer in Pennsylvania, and I raised my children that the police officer is your friend. I recently witnessed an event. I'm in Boynton Beach at my local shopping center. There was a homeless person there, the pillow in his cart. The police were so kind, so respectful, and yet firm with him, and that's what I expect. Two feet from there, I also witnessed black motorcycle, black sedan with flashing lights, sandwiching two landscape trucks and driving them away. And that struck fear in my heart. And since then, everything strikes fear in my heart. I saw a police car in the front of a beautiful new development where I live, and I said, oh, they're there. They're there to catch the landscape trucks. So I went over, and guess what? It was an open house, and they were the security. I was walking down Atlantic Avenue in Delray, and on a side street, I saw five police cars parked irregularly around an ethnic restaurant. And I said, oh, no, they're going to arrest the workers there. But really what happened is the restaurant was closed and the police went away. However, I just wanted to say that I hope I can tell my grandchildren that the police are the friend of the community. They are not there to round up our neighbors, to split up our neighbors' families, or to send them to Alligator Alcatraz. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patrick Cannon. I have no further comment. Cards, if anyone in the audience wishes to speak, please fill out a form. We have a couple minutes left. You are recognized, Mr. Cannon.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chairman. I am speaking to you as a volunteer ombudsman for the Florida Department of Elder Affairs. The ombudsman program was initiated back in 1965 by the Older Americans Act at the federal level and is carried out at the state level by the Florida Department of Elder Affairs. We advocate for the rights and the proper treatments of our senior citizens residing in nursing homes in Palm Beach and assisted living facilities. Today, there are 54 nursing homes and 195 assisted living facilities licensed in Florida, having a total of 16,002 residents. Their rights are specified by Florida statute. Ombudsmen receive complaints or requests for assistance through the telephone number at the bottom of a poster that is pasted, required to be in each facility's walls. We also get resident complaints and concerns from caretaker family members. We have 15 volunteers in the county of Florida, the county of Palm Beach, I'm sorry. And so far, so far in 2025, there have been 1,028 visits by an ombudsman to assist or advocate for an elderly resident in one of the facilities. Let me give you some examples of the things that we come across. One, a facility had exit doors that allowed memory care or dementia residents walk out unassisted into traffic. Another place, a resident required assistance walking, but somebody let them ignore them, and they were in the bathroom and fell and required surgery. Another one, a resident wasn't given the required antibiotics until it was brought to their attention. What the ombudsman can do is ensure that such matters are brought to the attention of the facility administrator or the proper staff member to bring it to their attention. At this time, we all know that governments at all levels are actively seeking to reduce costs and increase efficiencies. As ones who have witnessed the needs of these people in the facilities, we would like to stress that any proposed reductions in funding for these programs or services not be paid attention to and to watch for these kinds of things. We don't have any specific laws or bills that are endangering us right now, but they are there. And just to pre-realize that the ombudsman program goes through the state and is a very small portion of the state budget, but a very big important thing to our citizens. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you do in our community. That concludes public comment. Members and senators, I wanted to just thank Senator Harrell and Representative Snyder for hosting us in their district, thank the L Center for hosting us today, and let you know that the clients of L's have a table outside of items that they make and sell to benefit their program. So if you can take a minute and see what they have to offer, that would be great. Seeing no further business before the delegation, Representative Weinberg moves for your rise.